All right. Good evening, everyone. Happy to see you here tonight. And I understand there's a microphone outside so people filing in can hear what we're talking about. My name is Vicki Walker and I'm the Director of the Department of State Lands, which is the agency that has the current permit out for public review, a removal fill permit. And so we're here to take public testimony on the Jordan Cove Energy Project tonight. This is our fifth public hearing. We had four public hearings in southern Oregon last week. And we were requested to do one in the valley, so we went ahead and complied with that. The information that you provide to us tonight is really important. So I appreciate all the time that each of you spend on preparing your testimony, which is why we're going to go over some rules pretty soon, because it's really important for you to respect the testimony of others. Whether you agree with it or not is not important. What's important is that you observe the rules of decorum and allow everyone to have their chance to speak. So I want to tell you a little bit about our regulatory role and the removal fill process. To protect Oregon's water resources, projects that propose removing or filling material in waters and wetlands are required to obtain a removal fill permit from the department so that we can determine any potential impacts. And that's why you're here, to share with us what you think those impacts might be. The proposed Jordan Cove Energy Project is proposing removal fill activities, and they have to obtain a permit. The permit is one of multiple approvals, however, authorizations, permits, and others that the project is required to obtain from Oregon governments and agencies. The public review and comment period is an important opportunity for you to evaluate the project, and it's important for us to hear from you. The proposed project is also required to obtain authorizations from DSL for a variety of project components, such as easements for bridges, pipelines, river crossings, stormwater outflows, crossings on state-owned land, leasing and registration for WORF certifications and data buoys, authorizations and easements for mitigation sites, and a sand and gravel license for the proposed access channel. If you ask me, that's a lot of stuff. So this removal fill permit is just one tiny piece of the giant puzzle of this project. Common opportunities for all those things I just talked about, they vary. No application has been submitted on those other items, so no comment period is yet open on those. Right now, we're only talking about the removal fill application. The purpose of this hearing, to gather your comments, is also to provide a safe, productive forum for all of you and for all of us. We hope to hear from as many of you as we can. We average about 63 to 65 people, so it's unlikely we'll hear from everyone, but we'll do the best that we can, which is why we limit your comments to two minutes. We will end the hearing promptly at eight. So if I've overestimated the number of people I'm going to put in the front row, they'll be limited or not be allowed to testify. So let me talk about the proposed ground rules. You see them here on the screen. So I'm not going to read them carefully, but I want you to notice a couple of things. If you all have a cellphone, would you please check it now? I see some of you with one in your hand. Make sure it's on mute, please. That's very rude to have a cellphone ring or make noise while someone's testifying. No signs, banners, placards of any kind, no waving of hats. You can wear your T-shirts, you can wear your hats, but I don't want any waving of those things in the air, please. Also, do not disrespect speakers and interrupt them. Silent demonstrations of support or opposition is fine, and would demonstrate what a silent support would be like, or your thumb down or your thumb up. But please, no clapping, no yelling, no noise of any kind, because I adhere to these rules very strictly, and you will be asked to leave. And if I ask you to leave and you don't leave quietly, then I will close the hearing and no one else will be able to testify, and that will be on you, not me. So you all know those rules. Do not block or interfere or get into shoving matches with people. This isn't the place for that kind of thing. No place is the place for that. So if you have spoken, after you come up and testify, we'd ask you to exit the room, because this room is smaller, this is our smallest venue, and we need to have room for other people to come in and testify. So let me ask if anyone has any questions about those rules. Yes, ma'am?
How come it's the smallest venue when it was going to be a big turnout?
Because this was a hearing that was added at the end of the schedule.
Okay.
And, yeah, and we had to be near our state building, which is across the street, and we had to use state resources. So this was the closest and the largest venue we could get. Any other questions? Okay, that means you understand the rules, which is great. Okay, so let me, let me talk a little bit about the comment procedure. The front row, this is going to be a little, just a teeny bit different from other venues in that the whole front row I've reserved for speakers. And there's 11 chairs. We usually bring up five, and then it was eight. Now it's 11. So I'll bring 11. If you come down and start sitting here, and then this will be the first speaker that I'll call up. And then as these speakers speak, then if you could keep moving down so I can call more people to get in line. Does that all make sense to everyone? And then when you exit, would you exit this side, please? Because we have people coming in over here. Yes, ma'am?
So if you call people to sit there, should they bring all their belongings with them so that they can get out easily?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you repeat the question, just so everybody-
Yeah, that's a good idea. I've done that at every hearing except this one. The question was, should we bring all our belongings when we come testify so that you can leave? And the answer is yes, please do so. Some of you have a priority card. Can somebody hold one of those up? Yes, that's an orange card. Those are for people who are 65 and older or disabled. We try to get those folks come in, to come in and testify first, but not always. I try to mix it up a little bit, but we do want to try to hear from our elders to show respect, but we also need to hear from everyone else. So I will mix in a few elders with priority cards as we go along this evening. Let's see. If you miss your turn because you're not in the room, I'm sorry, but you'll have to sign up again. So I would encourage you not to leave the room. And, I should know these by heart.
It's okay, each location's different.
Yeah, so we usually have two places at the table for people to speak. Tonight, we have a microphone right here. If it's too high, let us know, we can lower this for you. You need to speak to us at the table for many reasons. One, I'm listening to your testimony, and I'm taking notes. And so is our tape recorder that is going to, your comments are going to be transcribed by a transcriber. So they'll be written comments, and they'll be posted on our website. This little mic here that looks kind of outer spacey, it's called a Yeti mic, you need to be right near this, speaking into it from here. If you stand here, the Yeti mic will pick you up, and then it will record on our machine. So don't turn around and talk to the audience. That won't get your comments on the record, okay? Eric is one of our staffers, and Eric is one of the technical team. Ann here is going to be taking your testimony on the recorder. She will also be monitoring this little pink sheet right here that tells you you have one minute remaining. So please kind of pay attention. If you see a pink flash in front of your eyes, look up, and that's your one minute remaining. The flip side says, "Time's up," and I will ask you to stop. Even if you're, sometimes I'll let you go a couple words into your sentence, but a lot of people didn't want a run-on sentence, and we can't do that. So your time is up, and we need to move on. All my other staff is out helping others. We have Bill Ryan here, and Malia is at the sign-up, and Ally is our communications person, and Mark is our technical staff. Restrooms are-
Out the, excuse me, out the door into the lobby and at the far end in the left corner.
Out the door, in the lobby, far end at the left corner are restrooms.
Right, so there's officers that can direct people if they need to.
All right, I want to thank the Department of Veterans Affairs and we're going to Department of Veteran Affairs for allowing us to use their building tonight. They take no position on the Jordan Cove application. They simply are being kind as another state agency in allowing us to use this facility. So I just wanted to give that disclaimer. With that, I'm going to go ahead, oh, yes, we have two more things. We have a yellow, a yellow comment card. If you don't want to wait around, or if you have more to say beyond your two minutes, you may fill out one of these. And there is a comment table out front, Ann can also give you one. There's one right here, so please take it. You can submit your comments by, excuse me, I've had a cold all week. You can submit your comments by email, fax, or regular old postal mail. You can submit them to us tonight, and they don't have to be typed, but if you want us to read them, please make them legible. Sometimes I can't read people's names on the sign-up sheet, so please try to be legible. If you have questions, the green card is your place to put questions. They will not be answered tonight. We're gathering all the questions, and the technical team will answer those and put them on our website when we've concluded these hearings. Sometimes while you're testifying, something will appear to be a question to us, and we'll go ahead and write it down and get it in the record. So do know that we're listening, actively listening, and are doing our best to make sure you get all the questions answered that you need. Any other questions? Excuse me, yes, ma'am?
Yes, I didn't catch who the two, I mean, not necessarily your names, but what your positions are with respect to this decision-making process.
Okay, I'm the Director of the department, and I'm the one who makes the final decision. It's my name that's on the paper that says, either they meet all of the requirements of the removal fill permit, they need further work, or they don't. It's me, with the advice of all my technical staff. Ann works in the Department of Support. She's support for the executive team, for me and my two deputies, and many other things. Yeah, Ann, the rules coordinator, she does a lot of work. So Ann works in the agency as well. Any other questions? Yes, ma'am?
No, I was just cheering for Ann.
Oh, cheering for Ann. Silent support, cheer for Ann. That's great. Okay, well, I'm going to go ahead and call 12 people. If you'll come down and start getting into the front row. Tracy Molina, and if I mess up your name, I apologize. Jessica Garcia, Nancy Harrison, Patricia Weber, John Seelove.
Do you want to go in, in order, ma'am?
They can go in anywhere they get down here.
You can sit wherever you want.
Sam Crop, Angelique Orman, Brian Boyce, I think? Boyce, thank you, can't tell that seat. Adrian Kirk, Dawn Stover, Dan Saris, and Dick Gorgon, or Gergon. That should be, oh, that's 12, so Dick, please wait. Sorry, you'll come up next person, okay? I miscounted, there's only 11 seats. So I'll call you up next. All right, so if we want to have Tracy, come on up. Okay, so let's make sure everybody's seated. There's one more seat down at the very end. No, you cannot. Sorry.
Trying to elbow anybody here.
Yeah. Yeah, this room is small in that regard. Yeah, no one's allowed up here on the stage with us, that would be great.
The only other thing we want- I think the only last thing that we have before Director Walker starts is when you do start your testimony, if you could say your first name, say your last name, and then spell your last name, because we really want to get it accurate so that when these are transcribed, we have your correct information. That's really important to us. And I will remind you.
Great, and I didn't ask if there were any elected officials or tribal leaders, chairs or chiefs in the audience, but they're asking at the front door and would have told me. So that's who we have testify first, but they're not here. So ma'am, Tracy?
Yes.
You're the first one. Welcome.
Before I say my name, I just want to also again acknowledge that the land that we're on, we're on Kalapua land. They were forcibly removed from here by the United States Army, and is why, why those people aren't here today to welcome you to this land, their land. So I'm here with that in mind, and I'm here for the land. My name is Tracy Molina, M-O-L-I-N-A. I am from Soletz, Oregon, that's where I was raised. I'm not, I'm not enrolled in any of those tribes, but my children are, and a lot of my friends are. And I am really sick and tired of seeing pipelines shoved through indigenous peoples' lands, just because they were wrong, that, there was a coastal reservation here that was all up and down the Oregon coast, all the way out to the Lament Valley, and that was all supposed to be for those, all those tribes. And they split it up into three different tribes, which is Grand Round, Soletz, and Coos. And there's, and inside each of those tribes are 30 other bands and tribes. So that's my kids, that's my grandkids, that's the people who raised me. And so I will do everything I can to, to make sure, I don't want to see pipelines or export terminals, especially LNG, because it's liquid natural gas, which has been proven It's a dangerous thing, it's a, it's more raping of the earth, it's more destroying the climate, and that's destroying life as we know it on planet Earth. We don't want to see that. So we're here for the land, we're here for you, we're here for everybody, we're here for the water, the earth, everybody. That's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, audience. Jessica?
Hello, good evening. I'm Jessica Garcia, G-A-R-C-I-A. I'm a member of the Confederated Tribes of Soletz Indians, and I have four children who are also enrolled tribal members. And I just, I think with, as we all know how important the land and the water is to native people and to native women and mothers, and I just, I feel like the, the pipeline on our land, it, it does negatively affect our children, you know, and how we raise them and their mental health and their spiritual well-being. And so I just, as a mother here tonight, just to, you know, ask that, you know, the pipeline not be built on tribal land. You know, the Coos are, they're our neighboring tribe, so, we're all part of the coastal line there. So, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Here we go. Normally, I ask people to move down, but because this venue is so close, just go ahead and stay where you are, and I'll fill the vacant seats. All right, Nancy Harrison, please.
I'm here as a concerned citizen and a grandmother of children who will be growing up in this What you will say is that the project needs to align with protection, conservation, and best use of waterways, needs to be a public use and a best use. I don't think that this project fits any of those descriptions. I think dredging in Coos Bay, and I believe you will also have to dredge the waterways that the pipeline goes through, I believe that that will damage the habitat, will damage the fisheries, will damage all the use of those waterways for anything else. And I do not believe that it's a public use, it's for private profit. And therefore, it seems to me that it doesn't meet the criteria that you need to align with best use of the waterways. I strongly urge you to deny this permit and to let us maintain these waterways for recreational and fishing and wildlife use and for the health of this planet. Thank you.
Thank you. Patricia Weber?
Patricia Weber, Corvallis, Oregon, W-E-B-E-R. On May 7th, 2018, the Federal Aviation Administration issued a notice of presumed hazard to JSEP concerning the height of their LNG tankers. The FAA directed JSEP to lower the structure height by 44 feet or terminate the project. The FAA issued similar directives pertaining to four other structures, again directing JSEP to lower the structure heights or terminate the project. One of the, two of these structures are their LNG storage tanks. It is not DSL's responsibility to resolve FAA hazards, but it is your responsibility to manage Oregon's state waters and to manage the process by which these waters are modified. I'm a licensed professional engineer with 25 years' experience in Oregon's construction industry. One thing I have learned is, do not issue a permit to excavate foundations until you know the size of the building, because the size of the building determines the size of the foundations. And yet, this is exactly what Pembina wants you to do. For example, Pembina's reason for widening the channel is to accommodate their very large tanker ships, yet the FAA has told them they do not get to use those very large tanker ships. So why are we even discussing widening the channel at this point? Pembina knew six months prior that major changes must be made to their facility design. These are not minor tweaks that you can address via conditions of approval. But Pembina deliberately submitted false information and incorrect plans for your review. Please manage, manage this process correctly and deny the application for this permit.
Thank you. Thank you. John Seelove?
Hi, I'm John Seelove, spelled S-E-L-O-V-E. I'm a citizen of Oregon. On March 11th, 2011, a magnitude nine quake in Japan caused a tsunami that left ships scattered about on the land. A nuclear plant was compromised. March 27th, 1964, a magnitude 9.2 quake in Alaska destroyed the town in Port of Valdez by soil liquefaction and tsunami, rupturing the Union Oil Company's oil tanks, sorry, Union Oil Company's oil tanks, igniting a major fire. The largest tsunami wave was 200 feet near Valdez. On January 22nd, 2018, a sub-ine pass LNG export facility in Louisiana, two of the five storage tanks are shut down due to leaks. There's been a 10-year history of leaks there. They're still shut down, or they're shut down for months. March 31st, 2014, at Plymouth LNG, in Plymouth, Washington, there's a very large explosion. The blast results in a release of 14.3 million cubic feet of gas every 24 hours. June 2015, in Chester County, Pennsylvania, wells are contaminated with lubricant and other contaminants during the construction of the Mariner East 2 Pipeline for frac gas. Since 2001, fracking operations in Silk, Colorado, and elsewhere have caused a large increase in cancer, birth defects, and toxic well water. And from June 2015 to June 2017, there have been 11 explosions or ruptures of major gas pipelines. There are 12 deaths and 10 injuries. Is this what we want for the people, the land, the water, the state of Oregon? I suggest not. Please deny the removal fill permit and any future permit applications for frac gas pipelines and facilities. Thanks.
Thank you. Sam?
Hi there, my name is Samantha Crop, S-A-M-A-N-T-H-A-K-R-O-P. I am a grassroots organizer, and I have also been an educator at the high school level for a number of years. And so I like to say I'm not a lawyer, I'm not a scientist, but I deal in the business of common sense, and that's what I want to talk about today. I know that an Oregon Court of Appeals ruled that the DSL has to determine that this project is in, is needed by Oregonians in order to approve these permits. And I think that leads me to ask some common sense questions, like, how can horizontal drilling under major waterways, including the water, the drinking water for thousands of Oregonians, risking fracouts and the toxification of that drinking water, be needed for Oregonians' health? How can dredging 18 million cubic yards from the port of Coos Bay be needed for Oregonians' fisheries? How can putting an extremely volatile liquefaction terminal on the coast of Coos Bay next to bunches of Oregon communities and schools be needed for public safety? These are questions, I think, of, that live in the realm of common sense, and I think that most people who, who ask these questions would arrive at the common sense answer that this project couldn't be needed. This project is not needed for Oregon's fisheries, for navigation, for public recreation, for conservation, it's certainly not needed for public safety. So I think that right now, what we're asking is that our, our administration, the Department of State Lands, consider these common sense questions and act truly in the best interest of Oregonians. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to call up, one, two, three, four, five more, six more people. Dick Gergon, come on up. Excuse me. Jay Yoro, I think. You know your last name better than I. Dr. Theodora Songas. Dan, no, we're not doing Dan, you testified before. Chris Brooks. One, two, three, four. Ann Jeanette Van Velees, and Scott Schaefer. And I didn't say this earlier, but those of you who testified previously at previous hearings will be put at the bottom of the list, and if we have time, I'll allow you to testify again, but it became clear we were not getting enough folks that came to testify, the opportunity to do that. If we'd heard you from one, you once, or twice, that was probably enough for now. So if we have room, we'll hear from you again. All right, so the next person after Sam to come up and testify is Angelique.
Hi there, my name is Angelique Orman, O-R-M-A-N. I wanted to say that one of the things that make Oregon the wonderful place that it is, is its clean water. And you're going to, you're going to hear from a lot of people that are desperate for income, and I feel for them, but this is not the way to do it. This proposed pipeline is in an earthquake zone, a tsunami zone, and it violates the Endangered Species Act. All pipelines leak eventually. It's not if, it's when. I know that you know the details of the grave environmental risks that we are undertaking for such little gain, and I'm just simply here to ask you to do what you know is right for current and future generations of Oregonians and deny the Jordan Cove removal fill permit. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to say, I know that people have put a lot of time into their testimony, so I really appreciate that you all are being polite. Bryson?
Bryn.
Bryn, oh, yeah, there's no S there. Come on down.
All right. Did you want this back?
Yes, please, that would be great, if I put the orange cards back and use them up.
Okay, I'm Brian Boyce. I'm going to spell both names, because the first name's a little odd. It's B-R-Y-O-N, B-O-Y-C-E.
Perfect.
Okay, and I may be one of the very few speakers here who has actually gotten a DSL permit 20 years ago.
Okay, well, go ahead, whenever you're-
All right. The most recent edition of the permit application for the Jordan Cove progress, project was received by DSL November 7th. On December 20th, DEQ sent Pembina the second of two letters demanding that Pembina fill in the inadequacies of their application. These two letters totaled 107 pages and were mostly detailed requests for engineering studies down all the way to the size of the soil particles whenever the project crosses the waters of the state. Any reasonable reply to this massive request will be hundreds of pages, perhaps thousands. Without this not-yet-submitted material, it is impossible for anyone, private, public, or professional, to give a comprehensive comment or to do the subject justice. That is why DSL took over seven weeks to reply to the application. In my opinion, it is time to wait and start a new public comment period once a final application exists. I just talked with my representative, who's now here in Salem, Mark Me- I just talked with my representative, who's now here in Salem, Mark Meek, and he said, gosh, when we had applications, when I was working for the city, we never had public commentary until there was a complete and final application. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Boyce. I'm sorry I got distracted. I apologize.
Hello, my name is Adrian Kirk, A.D.R.I.E.N.N.E.K.I.R.K., and I am a Coos person, a tribal member of the Confederated Tribes of Coos, Loa Amqot, and Sayusla Indians, and I currently live in Portland, Oregon. I am here to fervently ask that the Department of State Lands deny the removal fill permit because of the lethal impacts to the environment and threat of the well-being of the community that seeks to thrive in the Bay Area. The well-being of the community, as well as those who travel to the Bay for recreation or other, such as myself, is intrinsically tied to the natural environment. There is no binary. I eat the salmon from this estuary. The people of my tribe are salmon people. I attend salmon ceremony where we sing and dance in our traditional language and in our traditional ways to honor the salmon people and our ancestors. We are not one and another, we are one and the same. Dredging the Bay will disturb and increase the turbidity of the water, not just within the Bay, but all the tributaries and rivers, like the Coos River, that connect to it. It will one-hundred percent impact the health of the salmon, increasing the mortality and overall celebrity of the many fish beyond just salmon, including all the shellfish in the area. I have crab for dungeness and counter lamb prey with the Kukulue tribe and ODFW in the Coos Estuary. Activities I wish to continue for my recreation and also for my personal well-being, to perpetuate my culture's traditions. It's a healing practice. Additionally, the increase of vessel traffic will increase the safety risks of those navigating the waters, and there are so many who do so. I have friends and family and know youth who go out on the canoe and canoe in Jordan Cove, a place named after a descendant of our tribe, a place where the vessels are proposed to unload barrels of liquefied natural gas. This isn't safe, this isn't cool, this isn't right, this isn't just. It's heartbreaking. I will also add that moving the dredge material to the already functioning Kentucky slough wetland is not an acceptable mitigation proposal. Louis, thank you for my, thank you for taking the time to listen to me and others today.
Thank you. Don Stover.
Thank you. Don Stover, Stover, S.T.O.V.
Just a second. No, wait, wait, wait. Because we have another mic there, so hold on a second. Okay, let's try that.
I'll start again.
Okay.
Don Stover, last name Stover, S.T.O.V.E.R. Thank you. With raised hands, who loves Oregon? Who supports the blue state? Who supports a robust economy? And who supports good-paying, career-family jobs? This project creates a foundation to jumpstart successful careers for apprentices and strengthens working families. This project would strengthen an unseen construction economy past the year 2020. And of all the places, why not Oregon? Where the commitment to build with all union labor trades assures the best, safest, and most reliable project terminal. In this era, projects like these are built with the utmost focus on advanced technology, safety, in all circumstances, and built beyond code measures. I'm just a, I'm just a kid that grew up in northeast Salem. I graduated from McKay High School, joined United Brotherhood of Carpenters, went through the apprenticeship program, became a journeyman, foreman, and after nineteen years in the field, became a UBC representative, and also president of two thousand members of Local One Forty-Six. This project and many others that have been built are the pinnacle of the construction trades, and I urge you, please approve the Jordan Cove application. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Director, thank you very much for having us today. My name is Dan Sears. I'm the conservation, that's okay.
Sorry.
It's not phonetic.
That's right, I spelled your last name so we could write.
S.E.R.R.E.S. I'm the conservation director for Columbia Riverkeeper, and we're a member of the Power Past Frac Gas Coalition. And today, I just want to highlight that this project is not consistent with one of the key requirements for DSL, which is that the project be consistent with the protection, conservation, and best uses of the water resources of the state. The key evidence, I think, for this, one of the key evidence points is, in December twenty-eighteen, DEQ submitted ninety-plus-page letter that identified some of the reasons why this project didn't meet Oregon's, or hadn't demonstrated compliance with Oregon's water quality standards. And because it doesn't meet Oregon's water quality standards, it also doesn't meet this key standard to protect and conserve the best uses for the waters of the state. There are a couple points that they made that are directly relevant to removal fill. The first is turbidity in the bay, and they identified a lack of critical information. They said that there's just a conceptual approach to minimize turbidity and other pollutant discharges, and that Jordan Cove hasn't provided details of all proposed controls, and this creates uncertainty. They went further and identified how the best management practices along the pipeline route aren't adequate, they aren't adequately identified. Again, these are, I think, directly relevant to DSL standards. And this is from DEQ's letter. They said qualitative descriptions of proposed plans do not adequately demonstrate that measures will sufficiently mitigate risk to water quality. And they close by saying, "The gas pipeline includes no analysis to demonstrate that these BMPs will prevent a water quality violation of all pollutant discharges." So, given the information you have in this application, given DEQ looking at the same information and concluding that this project does not yet meet Oregon's water quality standards, I think this really compels DSL to deny this project and this removal fill application, and I thank you very much for listening to us.
Thank you, Dan. Dick Gergen. Did I do that right? You can correct me when you come up. It's hard to get up, isn't it?
No. I'll answer the most anything.
It's hard to get up and down.
My name is Dick Gergen. I'm a seventy-eight-year-old native Oregonian that has lived on the south coast since nineteen fifty-four. I own over one hundred acres on the north spit of Coos Bay, next to the proposed Jordan Cove Energy Project. My property includes three parcels that extend into Haines Inlet and Coos Bay. Also, I live in the Shorewood area, which is close to the project and the bay. Although my property is on the Northern Alternative Pipeline, I find it highly unlikely that FERC would pick this route over the preferred route, which is, is shorter and less expensive, with fewer environmental impacts. Jordan Cove will use horizontal drilling methods to place the pipelines well below the bay's bottom. This is much better than open trench methods and will better protect the bay. As for the applicant's plans for dredging, I am sure you are aware that the dredging has occurred in our bay for over one hundred years. It is necessary due to our port being a working port, supporting the local dock owners who service customers from around the world. Finally, the Kentucky Coho Restoration Project, entirely funded by Jordan Cove, will add one hundred acres of prime fish habitat to our Coos Bay estuary. I commercially fished for silver salmon in the sixties and seventies, out of Port Orford and other south coast ports. It would be wonderful to expand the habitat for this certain species. Therefore, I support the project and hope that you issue Jordan Cove a removal and fill permit with conditions that your agency deems necessary to mitigate for environmental impacts. I believe the mandate of the Oregon Department of State Lands is to find an equitable balance between protecting the state's waters while permitting projects that provide economic opportunities which benefit Oregonians. I have faith in your agency, that your agency will do just that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Were you, were you at the Coos Bay hearing?
I, we, I tried to get in, but they had bussed in so many people that my son called me, and he said, no need to come, because they were just, so I didn't make it.
Oh, right.
I was there, but I didn't make it. So we drove all the way up here today, because I thought it was important, I wanted to testify, but that's the reason you're standing here today.
Yeah.
Because I, I feel it's very important for our area.
Well, and I want to thank you, Dan. I'm very sorry you didn't get a chance to come, and I appreciate that you drove this far.
That's all right, it was worth it to me.
Okay.
Thank you.
And if you have any other testimony you wanted to provide, please make sure you send it in.
Okay, I will. Thanks very much.
All right, thank you, sir. Have a safe drive home. Jay, I'm looking forward to you telling me what that last name is.
Okay. It's Jay Yoro, Y.O.R.O.
Okay.
This time, I would like to yield my time to Jeff Niles.
Oh, good message, he was already up here. Oh, he was already up here. We did that once, and I, I didn't want to do it again, because then that allows someone to have four minutes to speak. So I prefer not to do that. Is there some of his testimony that you could read? Can he hand you his cellphone and you can read his testimony?
No.
Okay.
I would like him to speak.
Okay, well, I'm only gonna give him two minutes, because we did that once, and it just was very uncomfortable.
Okay. His name is Jeff, Jeff Niles.
Jeff Niles? Okay, Jeff Niles, are you in the room? Can you come down, please? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So we'll, we'll have Jeff Niles take your spot. Jeff, you only have two minutes. Thank you.
I'm Jeff Niles, Jeff, L.Y.L.E.S. I'm retired pipe fitter. I've worked all over the United States, in states like Louisiana, that has very unstable oil conditions, and they use pilings and other ways to stabilize the soil. Whenever Hurricane Katrina hit, none of the oil refineries or other buildings were damaged because of unsafe foundations, because they had adequately maintained the foundations there. And I worked, and I welded nat, on hot taps and natural gas lines, as well as other lines. And that's where you take a flange and weld it onto an existing natural gas line, with gas going through it, and they go and put a valve on it, and then they have a hydraulic drill go and drill a hole in it. And I did that all safely, without having it blow up in my face. And the thing about it is, is that I have a classified pressure vessel license, and with the people doing things here, we do it in a professional and safe way that maintains the integrity of our surrounding areas. And I thank you for your time, and I appreciate you giving me a chance to talk here.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Okay, I'm gonna call, one, two, three, four, five, six. Where, where are we? Ian Curtis, Alden McWayne, Hunter Calvert, Rose Christopherson, Kathy Chutey, and, oh, Jeff Niles, well, he just spoke. So Dick Leschley. All right, so we are back to Dr. Songas. Can we put this down? I can't reach it. Oh, yes, I apologize. Okay. One person, many things. Yes, right. And then I'm gonna scoot it towards you a little bit, so we can try and get it a little closer. Okay? Good? We'll try that. And here's this. Thank you. Thank you, okay. Good evening. I'm Dr. Theodora Songas, T.S.O.N.G.A.S. I'm an environmental health scientist, and I'm greatly concerned about the many adverse impacts on public health and the environment of the proposed Jordan Cove Pacific Connector Pipeline. This project is not in the best interests of Oregon or its citizens, and it's not consistent with the best uses of the waters of the state. It is important to understand the true costs of a project like this, in spite of any promises of jobs created. These costs are in people, these costs are an irreversible harm to public values, to mental and physical well-being, and to the health of wetlands, rivers, streams, and estuaries. Specifically, construction and maintenance of the proposed pipeline has the potential to harm the drinking water sources of thousands of Oregonians. Through clear-cutting, blasting, excavation, staging, road-building, and maintenance activities, the development of the pipeline will increase risks of landsides, erosion, flooding, and contamination of aquifers, ground and surface waters, with runoff fertilizers, pesticides, and drilling fluids. Water systems will be forced to cover the costs of finding alternative water supplies and additional treatment of impacted water supplies. Dredging of Coos Bay to increased depth to accommodate marine vessels is harmful to existing shellfish industries and collection areas, to estuary wildlife habitat, and leads to long-term costs in the continuing management and tidal zone, in a seismically active zone, and in an area subject to tsunami. Excavation of the pipeline under the bay increases the risk of contamination of estuary waters with drilling fluids, as well as wastewater runoff from large temporary construction staging areas. Because of its irreversible adverse impacts on the waters and ecosystems of our state, please deny the removal fill permit for this project. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your testimony. Ann Jeanette Banthelys? Did I get that right? Oh, I'm not even close. Well, I'm gonna look forward to how that beautiful neighbor's prepared. So, please help both first and last.
All right, my name is Ann Jeanette Banuelos, A.N.J.A.N.E.T., Banuelos, B.A.N.U.E.L.O.S.
Okay. That's beautiful, much beautiful, more beautiful than I said it, certainly. All right, thank you, ma'am, go for it.
Hello, my name is Ann Jeanette Banuelos. I'm a member of the Labor's Local Seven Thirty-Seven. I'm an organizer for them. This project is good for Oregon on many levels. It will provide Oregonians careers, not just jobs, with livable wages and, livable wages and benefits for not just them, but also their families. They will be able to, will also enable them to gain a pension and grow, grow with them as they work the project. This project will allow a person to start this project as an apprentice and could finish this project as a journey worker. And that's why I believe that you should approve this.
Thank you so much. All right, Scott Schaefer.
Hello, my name is Scott Schaefer, S.C.H.A.E.F.E.R. I'm from Local Fifteen-O-Three, in Portland, Oregon City. I am a thirty-year veteran of the trade union carpenter. I'm here to talk about all the initial impact that it's gonna give to this community, which has just been a low-income community for such a long time and really needs this project. You know, over six thousand jobs will initially be put forward on this project, you know, two thousand at the terminal, four thousand in the pipeline. Average job number is probably about a thousand during the fifty-three-month construction period for LNG terminal, over fourteen hundred during the twenty-four main construction of the natural gas pipeline. The initial benefits with this is just going to invigorate this community that has had such a struggle down there. We have so many carpenters, over six thousand in Oregon and southwest Washington, that are looking for projects like this, especially down in the south. Our carpenters and trade unionists that are down there, not to mention just every construction company that's working down there, these people are traveling hundreds of miles, leaving their families, to try and find work in places where this work is at. This is going to give them an opportunity to stay at home with their families, and to be able to work at home and sleep in their own beds, to be able to provide for their families. That is just something that they don't get to do on a normal basis, have a project like this that's gonna last for years for them. The initial approximate, two hundred and fifteen workers that are directly being employed by Jordan Cove in this, will be there for, will raise over, excuse me, forty-four-point-eight million in total labor compensation. A hundred and eighty people at the LNG, LNG terminal will have long-term jobs in Coos Bay, approximately another fifteen workers across the pipeline. The spending by these businesses and job holders will originate, as a result of this project, will spread throughout this economy. You know, I have some numbers here that are approximations that they have put out. For restaurants and hotels, over five million dollars. Retail stores, ten-point-seven million dollars. Arts and entertainment, another one-point-seven. Healthcare and social services, a fourteen-point-five million. Professional and technical. Professional and technical services over 20... oop, my time is up. I thank you very much for letting everybody speak tonight, and hopefully you can approve this project and this permit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Ian Curtis?
Oh, sorry. Does this need to go up? Hello, Ms. Vicki Walker. My name is Ian Curtis. That's spelled C-U-R-T-I-S. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm a student at South Eugene High School. So let me first begin by saying that I'm scared for my future. I'm scared for a future in which climate change is irreversible, a future in which solar, wind, and wave energy are nothing more than relics of what could have been. By continuing to expand our fossil fuel use, we risk making this nightmare a reality, and I'm scared for my life. I'm 17 years old and will live to experience the real effects of climate change. It will be my generation, my children, and my children's children whose very existence will be threatened by increased climate change, change that will only speed up with the construction of the LNG pipeline. I've spoken with several supporters of this pipeline today, and I'm not here to attack them. We all have the right to work. We all have the right to stable employment. But we cannot, for the sake of our planet, create more fossil fuel jobs like the LNG. We need renewable solutions like the Clean Energy Jobs Bill, which is being proposed and hopefully passed by the Oregon State Legislature this year. We need local, national, and global involvement on climate change. And though we can't move mountains by ourselves, we can do, um, we can all do our part to make this, making this a future that my generation and those who come to, um, will be able to survive in. So thank you for this opportunity, and I urge you to please deny the dredging permit and removal fill permit for the, both the terminal and the pipeline. Thank you.
Thank you. My son and daughter-in-law are high school teachers at Willamette High School in Eugene. They would be proud of you like I am. I appreciate that young people are taking an active role in their community. So thank you. Um, I bet you have a classmate here. Alden McWayne?
Yeah.
Right there. Come on up.
Uh, Alden McWayne, M-C-W-A-Y-N-E. And, okay. I'm Alden. I'm 17 years old. And we need to radically change our course if I want to have a future. Um, in the future, I want to be a professional jazz musician, and I also want to have a family and raise children, and hopefully get married one day. But... Projects like these, though, they put my future in harm. Projects that promise jobs and development but harm our planet and local communities in the long term are not worth it. Short-term profit and 200 jobs is not worth it for the sake of our planet in my future. Reckless decisions favoring private interests over our earth push us closer to the edge of climate destruction. We need clean energy, not pipelines, that will leak into the water of local farms and indigenous communities. This pipeline is built will be the largest emitter of CO2 in Oregon. This, and it is not worth it to only produce 200 permanent jobs. This will not benefit Coos Bay. Thank you.
And young man, I've been married 43 years, so I hope for all the best for you in that.
Thank you.
Party birthday. Uh, Hunter, are you with these guys?
Yes, I am.
Well, come on up and finish them out.
All right. My name is Hunter Calvert. I am 17 years old, and that's spelled C-A-L-V-E-R-T. I also attend South Eugene High School and the Environmental Club there. And the Jordan Cove project states that this pipeline is a bridge to the future, but the youth have the neuroplasticity along with the distance from the lure of the corporate system to embrace a broader scope to view the future in which this bridge leads. It's a future of unsustainable energy, fossil fuels, and ever-increasing carbon emissions. The pipeline is being built in response to global energy demands, of which are predicted to increase 50% by 2050. Along with it, fossil fuel production is predicted to increase by 40%, as reported by the Global Energy Institute. As a result, carbon emissions will skyrocket. Constructing this pipeline is not a ticket to a safe people or planet. In fact, it is simply another piece of the malignant puzzle of market-driven climate change. The total construction cost of the project will sum up to $1.7 billion. That's enough, that's enough money to install 130,000 solar panels or 40,000 wind turbines. Let's not invest in hydropower, wait, let's, let's invest in hydropower, wind, and sustainable energy, not gasoline. We must spend our money to build bridges to a greener society. As a spokesman for the youth and in concern for our future, I urge the Department of State Lands to deny the pipeline's dredging permits, not only because it violates our state environment standards today, but because it endangers the well-being of tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Safe drive back to Eugene.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, Rose Christopherson. And Rose, if you come to the microphone, I'm going to call some more folks up. Bill Sanders, Tyler Cornell, Tyrell Clark. Bill McDonald, Mark, Mark Halting, Mark Hasting. I'm not sure. Uh, you're an insulator of Local 36.
Hi, I'm Rose Christopherson, and that is C-H-R-I-S-T-O-P-H-E-R-S-O-N. I agree with everything that those three young men just said. I couldn't say it better, and I don't think I could say it as well as they said. And I'm going to give you a very different perspective. I am representing the Care of Creation Ministry of Augustan Lutheran Church up in Portland. And just from the perspective of Christians, we, we see whatever that is which created us is, is not a machine. It is, and we are supposedly created in the image of that. And that means to me that we have freedom and responsibility. And that means that we have to be responsible, to make the right decisions. And that's a very heavy task that you have ahead of you, to make the right decisions on this. We don't want to worship money, which is just something we make. We want to look to the higher things. And that includes a clean planet, which was described as a garden in Genesis. And they said, uh, that which created said, um, tend the garden, not cook the garden. Thank you.
Catherine Chudy?
Catherine, C-A-T-H-R-Y-N, Chudy, C-H-U-D-Y. My name is Catherine Chudy, and I'm testifying on behalf of the Oregon Conservancy Foundation in opposition to the removal fill permit for the Jordan Cove LNG Export Terminal and the Pacific Connector Rep Gas Pipeline. In the past two months, two significant climate reports have been published, one in October and one in November. Both of these reports focus on the catastrophic impact of accelerating climate change, providing a wake-up call by numerous scientists that we cannot ignore if we are to protect our communities from the devastating impact of unrestrained fossil fuel consumption. The proposed LNG export terminal and pipeline is an unrestrained business-as-usual fossil fuel infrastructure development that the Pacific Northwest and the state of Oregon do not need. What we do need is an immediate transition to a just and clean energy economy that leaves fossil fuels in the ground. Not only is catastrophic climate change passed on to future generations, it's a problem we confront now. In order to address the problem realistically, we need decision-makers to see through the deceptive arguments being used by fossil fuel benefits, our proponents, in their efforts to persuade vulnerable communities to buy into its short-term benefits jobs while securing profits for out-of-state companies using our planet's atmosphere as a landfill for greenhouse gas emissions. As the recently released climate reports make clear, increasing greenhouse gas emissions has deadly consequences for us all. You as decision-makers hold the quality of life and the survival of our planet in your hands. We are stakeholders in your decision, and we urge you to wisely say no to this permit and the terminal. And the cost of a thing is the amount of what I will call life, which is required to be exchanged for it immediately or in the long run. Henry David Thoreau, we thank you for this opportunity to testify.
Thank you, ma'am. Dick Leschley?
Oh, thank you. Name's Dick, last name's Leschley, L-E-S-H-L-E-Y. Uh, I made the eight-hour round trip from Coos Bay today so that perhaps some of the voices from Coos County could be heard. As past president, current board member of the Coos Bay Bay Area Chamber of Commerce, we represent hundreds of businesses and thousands of employees that support this project. Our board has voted to support this project when I was president in 2005. That was our position. It simply hasn't changed. It only strengthened in those years past. That's one of the voices that I wanted to say. The other one's mine. I moved to Coos Bay in 1984, homeless. Homeless because I had no home. I was evicted from my apartment. I had two kids. I had no car. I had no transportation. I had parents, thank God, that, that helped me out. So I moved to Coos Bay. There was no work. I got a job as a cab driver. 18 months later, the company went bankrupt, and we bought that company out of bankruptcy for a very minimal amount of money with one taxi cab. 32 years later, we were, we were supporting 50 people, 60 people in that neighborhood. My, my issue is that I've heard this over and over and over again. This is prices too high to pay for, uh, 200 jobs. What is the price to pay for one job? Can you imagine laying in bed in Estoria, Oregon, listening to the rain pound on your head, knowing you have 24 hours before you put your kids out on the street, and you have no job? What is a job worth? How much value does a job have? And that's the voices. I worked with these people for 32 years. We started, they were broke, flat broke when they came to work. We built them up. They made money. Perhaps they moved on to better work, which was great. They educated their kids. Some of them bought homes. We gave them hope. We have no hope in Coos Bay. Please understand, you do not have hope if you move to Coos Bay. There is no hope. If you, if the Jordan Cove project is approved, we can make a job, and we can make hope for the hopeless. Absolutely priceless. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, we have, oopsie. We have an elected official I'd like to call down, Mark Ruder, mayor of Kalama. Oh, Mike. I said Mark. How did I say? You wrote Mike. I, you know, I'm goofy. Just five, five hearings and late at night.
That's all right.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Well, thank you very much for letting me speak here today, and I am speaking... What's that? That's all right.
Let me raise it just a little bit because we have a film recording going too, so.
Perfect. Thank you. My name is Mike Ruder. I'm mayor of Kalama, but I am speaking here as an individual, not as a representative of Kalama there.
Okay.
Just want to start off with that. And I have an article here calling "Why U.S. Should Be Cautious About LNG Exports." After much debate, the U.S. is moving ahead with liquid natural gas exports, but it might want to take, to study Australia's experience to understand the possible consequences. Australia is the number-one producer of LNG in the world. And right now, due to exporting so much natural gas, they now have to import their natural gas to run their industries and for the residents because of the, they have long-term contracts. And so, um, it's, the export has pushed Australia's domestic natural gas prices to triple over the last couple of years. The average house sold has seen their gas bill spike by $200 this year. And one study suggests the bills could keep on adding up as more natural gas is diverted to exports. Beneath the, behind the phenomenon is some basic math. Sorry. Yeah, I'm still not used to speaking here. Uh, natural gases producers can fetch a higher price by exporting their product rather than selling it domestically. As a result, there is a corresponding increase in domestic prices as supplies tighten. In other words, natural gas goes to the highest bidder, and when opening up to exports, there is a much broader pool of bidders. So what I'm trying to say is, is that if we export this gas, that our own industries and our own residents are going to have to pay higher prices due to the competition from the Asian buyers. And so that's my concern here. So thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming down from Kalama.
What's that? That way? Thank you.
All right, Bill Sanders? He hasn't told us, so I'm going to have to show him.
No, it's, we're good. We're good. Okay, Bill Sanders, S-A-N-D-E-R-S. I'm an ironworker from Portland, Oregon, 30 years. I've worked up and down the west coast on various projects. And, and I know the permit is just one of many hurdles to get there. And people are all held up like if we kill this, the battle's over. And is or, and it isn't. But I know that to get here, that there's been a lot of planning on, on how it's going to impact environmentally, financially, et cetera. And having been in Oregon since the early '70s and living in southern Oregon, I know that Coos County is economically depressed, and they could really use this. Not to mention the dredging of the, the channel and into the bay could impact other financial incentives to come in and, and make this like a shipping port somewhere between LA and Seattle, which would help the Oregon infrastructure in itself create more jobs. As a union man, it's going to create all kinds of construction, and I, I'm all for it. I mean, it's, it's just a win-win, putting living wage jobs down in the area, more taxes into Oregon's economy. It's going to help schools, et cetera. We're not maybe just relying on the lottery. And I really should have scripted this out, but I'll take a comment card. Thank you.
Thank you. Tyler Cornell?
It'll be all right. I got it. Uh, Tyler Cornell, C-O...
A little closer.
Tyler Cornell, C-O-R-N-E-L-L. I'm a, a local union pipe fitter. Been in construction for about 10 years. Um, and I think that, uh, well, I'm just here for the, show my support for the LNG project. I think it's, uh, I do believe that this will be built to the highest standards in regards to the environment and to, uh, the local community. And, uh, and a father of three, uh, this is, I am the sole provider for my family. So, uh, opportunities like this do not come around very often for fellows like me. So I would appreciate to take advantage of an opportunity like this. So thanks for listening to me, and please approve the permit.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Call down, uh, call down a couple of our elders. Sandy Polashuk, Mary Ann Fish, I think it's Mary Ann, Deborah Frommerain, Dana Turner, and Mary Moffett. Hopefully I didn't overextend myself. And in the meantime, I'll hear from Tyrell Clark.
My name is Tyrell Clark. C-L...
Oh, that's...
Vertically challenged.
Sorry. Some of us have that problem. Sorry. I just want to make sure everybody was awake. Okay. Try that again.
My name is Tyrell Clark. C-L-A-R-K. I'm a local 290 steam fitter. I've been steam fitting for 13 years. Since 2005, I've heard about this project and the opportunity it has for the southern Oregon area. This opportunity will be, this opportunity will be more beneficial to the area than anything that's come to that area in a long time. anything that's come to that area in a long time. The project seems to be well thought out and has a lot of benefits to the area. Not only the, the constant jobs that are going to be there, but the supporting jobs that it will take to support a project like this, let alone the 6,000 jobs that it will give to the area to start a project like this and keep going for the next 15 years that'll, the project will be under construction, maintenance. There's immense amount of opportunity that the project will, will have. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Looking for my sheet. Bill McDonald? Did I, had I called you down before? Bill McDonald? Mark Halting? Or, okay. Correct me on your last name.
That's Mark Hating, H-A-T-T-I-N-G.
Oh, that's a T there. Yay! Mark Hating. That sounds much better. All right, sir. Go for it.
Okay.
On the floor for research so we don't mess up the microphone. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay. Yes. Mark Hating. I'm an insulator out of Local 36 here in Portland. You know, originally from Alaska, and I went through this back in '75 when they wanted to build a pipeline. Well, we heard from the tree huggers, it's going to hurt this, it's going to hurt that. Well, it seems that caribou herds are still thriving, the fish are still swimming, and so I don't see what the problem be. Things now are a lot different. Engineering has gotten a lot better than what it was back in '75, if I'm not mistaken. And it seems to me, I've heard a lot of people talk about climate change and shit and stuff. I'm just wondering how many of them came in their horse and buggy for saying their cars are also contributing to the greenhouse effect. So I'm just curious as to why they're crying about wanting jobs that will help the state as far as, because I know Alaska boomed during the '75, the four, five years of the Alaska pipeline being built, and it still thrives as today. And that pretty much does me. Thank you, sweetheart.
Thank you. All right. We're going to our elders. Sandy Polishuk?
Very good.
Did I get it right?
You did.
Sure.
My name is Sandy Polishuk, P-O-L-I-S-H-U-K. I'm here to ask you to deny the removal fuel permits for the project because I do not believe that the project complies with our state environmental standards. I am living my 79th year on this planet, and it's been a good life because the planet has been livable. I feel an obligation to leave a planet that is livable to the young people, like those lovely 17-year-olds who testified earlier, like my grandchildren and my grandnieces. I'm sorry, tear up when I worry about them, and I worry about what their life is going to be like. It's going to be some, feels like it's going to be some kind of horror movie. I also speak as someone who belonged to two unions during my working life, and I was an officer in both of those unions and on the negotiating team on another. So I feel much solidarity with the union members in this room, and I support and understand their need for jobs. But I beg them to get jobs of the future. Those apprentices, one of them spoke about, should be in renewable energy and weatherization and making, making the future. This project is a project of the past. Building infrastructure for old technology is a waste of resources. We need so much work in making the new economy, and these people could contribute so much, and we could join hands in solidarity because, yes, the environmentalists, the climate activists, we want the best for those people, but the best in the long term is to move away from fossil fuels and reduce the carbon in our atmosphere so that we can live a good life. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Ann Fish?
Mary Ann Fish, F-I-S-H.
How do you step this a little bit closer to the microphone? It's going to be a little bit down, otherwise we're going to fall down.
Okay. I'd like to speak against the pipeline and the LNG terminal, and there are many reasons that I can think of, but I'd like to just name a few. The traditional tribal territories, the cultural resources and burial grounds are threatened by the pipeline. Nearly 400 rivers and streams would be threatened. We've heard other people testify about that already, including the Klamath, the Rogue, the Umquah, the Coos, the Coquill rivers, as well as the Coos Bay estuary. Crossings would impact communities, businesses, and wild salmon that rely on clean water. Farmer and landowner rights would be trampled. Nearly 700 private landowners would be impacted along the pipeline route, and many would be threatened with eminent domain if they do not settle for a small, one-time payment for permanent use of their land. Exporting our natural gas would raise prices for consumers here at home by 36% to 54%. And nearly 1,800 temporary residents from outside local communities would descend on coastal and pipeline route towns during the construction phase. Corporate CEOs promise that dozens of jobs will remain after construction, but history has proven that such promises are rarely kept. Renewable energy development creates far more jobs than natural gas. These are just a few of the reasons that I would oppose this project, and I'm hoping for the best.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm going to call a couple more people down before I call you up, if you don't mind. Let's see. I need to finish up this page. Joe Stalick and Jake Phillips. Mike Stalick? Wonder if there's a relative there. Donna Haynes, Pam Driscoll, and Kelly O'Hanley. I'm going to finish out the elders on that page. And so I'm going to come back up to, where was I? Deborah Romerin? Romerin? You're going to correct me. Thank you.
Deborah Romerin, and that's R-O-M-E-R-E-I-N. I'm from Portland. So you've heard and will hear many more comments about how this Jordan Cove project will threaten the health and use of hundreds of our waterways, the drinking water supplies for more than 154,000 Oregonians, our salmon runs, habitat of marine species from the dredging of Coos Bay, to name but a few ways this project would be wholly inconsistent with the protection, conservation, and best uses of our water resources of the state. But you know what? What about the big picture that people have mentioned? How can I not talk about the climate situation that grows worse every day? Last month, the New York Times headline read, and I quote, "Emissions Surge: Greenhouse Gases Lichen to a Speeding Train," referring to the growing pace at which greenhouse gases are accelerating. Another breaking news alert hit five days ago in the Times warning, quote, "Scientists Say the World's Oceans Are Heating Up Faster Than Previously Thought: A Finding With Dire Implications for Climate Change." And we all know the UN recently stunned the world when it warned that we have a mere 12 years, 12 years to make giant, not gradual, changes, or we'll be living out scenes from the Book of Revelation. Even 13 government agencies last November issued their own dire report. Question: What credible, august, esteemed authority are we yet waiting to hear from? They've all already weighed in, and they're clear. We're on a collision course, and we have to cut fossil fuel emissions drastically. We are indeed the species that possesses the venerated executive function of the prefrontal lobe. Let's all together use it to protect our water resources and the climate. Deny this permit. No conditional use, just deny it. And I have to tell you guys, have you read the articles? They are automating like crazy.
Okay. I just saw that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Can I have your orange card?
Oh.
Thank you very much. Okay. Dana Turner?
That's Dana Turner. Thank you. I'm a concerned citizen, and I'd like to speak to the removal fill permit. Oregon law requires of DSL that the removal fill permit for Jordan Cove and the Pacific Connector be consistent with protection, conservation, and best use of water resources. Removal fill would impact our water resources with drilling, dredging, removing, and filling dirt, building roads, laying pipe, and using heavy equipment in sensitive areas. It would necessitate cutting of stream side and wetland vegetation, changing stream banks and aquatic habitats. Waters will be warmer, and they will suffer from turbidity. Removal fill would impact six miles of wetlands and 485 waterway locations. I ask, is removal fill on this scale consistent with protecting, conserving, and best using our water? This is not preservation and conservation. It is unprecedented and ruinous impact on water resources. Jordan Cove threatens water for drinking, recreation, fish, and aquatic life at a time when our waters are warming and fish numbers are decreasing. Removal fill for Jordan Cove and the pipeline is another blow to our waters. The best protection and conservation of our water is to disallow Jordan Cove and the pipeline. I ask you, please deny Jordan Cove. Please deny the removal fill permit for 85, 485 waterway crossings and six miles of wetlands. Please say no to fossil fuels which are warming our planet. Our water and our planet cannot stand degradation for the lifetime of this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Mary Moffett? Did you come down? Mary Moffett? Okay. All right. Let's see. I'm going to go back up where everybody's. Don't have anybody take the senior job over. Joe Stalick?
Last name Stalick, S-T-A-L-I-K. My first name is Joe. I am a member of Local 36 in Portland, Oregon. I've spent my entire life here in Salem, Oregon, traveled up and down these coastal rivers and oceans with my family. I'm second-year generation insulator. I have brothers, nephews, nieces, all in the trade. I think this project would help out the southern Oregon extremely well. This forest has been depressed for so long. I remember going down and working at the old mill. That is no longer there. And that's the same problem we have in all the coastal provinces because there are no more mills. You know, we talk about mudslides and stuff up there in the hills after they go up and do their work. Well, to me, that creates fire access in case we have forest fires. We don't have to build the roads because they're already built. We just got to maintain them. So that's a plus for us. And as far as fishing, me and my brothers and our friends, we didn't have any problems with fishing down in Newport, Oregon after we built the NOAA Center. Didn't hurt that fishery at all. Matter of fact, it made even better for crabbing. And I think this project should be approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Jake Phillips?
I'm Jake Phillips. I'm Jake Phillips of Local 36 Insulators. I've worked in the trade for 20 years, been up and down the West Coast, did various jobs from cogens to oil refineries to nuclear power plants. And the one thing that all those places have in common is they all care about the environment and the environmental impact they have. Everyone who's here tonight, I thank everybody because we all care about the future. There's not a reason why we can't have a job built and maintain protection for the environment. Thank you for your time.
My name is Mike Stalick.
I could bend over.
We tried to find the middle ground, but it just doesn't exactly work that well.
I need to arrange well by height.
I guess you do.
All right, sir.
My name's Mike Stalick, S-T-A-L-I-K. I'm an insulator for Local 36 Portland, Oregon, for 30 years. I believe in the Sierra Jordan Cove project, which I think you should approve it. I know that everybody's worried about the environment, which I think, you know, once they get all their paperwork and stuff down with it, they will provide you with that and come up with where everybody's happy the same way. And I do support the Sierra Jordan Cove project, and I hope you approve the applications. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. I'm going to call down a couple more folks so we can keep our seats full here. Really smoking tonight. This is great. Okay. Oh, dear. Can't read this one. Susan Barn, Barnout?
Barnhart.
Barnhart. Okay. Thank you. Loretta Houston. Diane?
Mycena.
Thank you. Jan Zucker?
Zuckerman.
Zuckerman? Shane Nels? Peyton Johnson? Johnston? And Kevin Joyce? Hopefully, I didn't overextend myself because I'm going to call somebody up right now and we'll three have a seat. That would be, let's see. Donna Haynes?
My name is Donna Haynes, H-A-I-N-E-S, from Eugene, and I'm here representing faith community, people of faith particularly. I'm a United Methodist and a supporter of camping and retreat ministries for all denominations. If you ask most anyone professing strong spiritual beliefs where those beliefs began, the vast majority will say in nature. A majority of those will add at church camp. One of the United Methodist church camps that will be impacted if this permit is allowed is Camp La Gua, near Eagle Point, east of Medford. La Gua has been offering kids and adults from throughout Oregon outstanding recreational and spiritual opportunities since 1953. Over the years, thousands of people have enjoyed hiking and backpacking its many trails, fishing its two streams, sliding down its natural waterfall slide into a beautiful pool, drinking its fresh water, and so much more. Construction of this pipeline would likely change all that, cutting trees that shade the streams, dredging stream bottoms, relocating streams. All that would lead to contaminated drinking water and other negative impacts for La Gua guests. I received the following email from Reverend Todd Bartlett, Executive Director of Camping and Retreat Ministries for the Oregon Idaho Annual Conference of the Methodist Church this morning. "I am saddened by the potential danger of contamination of water and the watershed that encompasses the La Gua United Methodist Church camp. As the Executive Director of the Board of Camp and Retreat Ministries for the Oregon Idaho United Methodist Church, the possibility of the pipeline concerns me deeply. This concern is for my staff, who live and work at the camp, and for the many people who attend events at our camp, those who use this area to access wilderness as there's an..." an entry point to U.S. Forest Service land at the camp, and for those in this region who call this home and who would have significant damage done to their homes and lives due to the failure of the pipeline to prevent contamination. I'm also concerned about the potential damage to this beautiful and valuable ecological area. We urge you to say no."
Ma'am, could you tell me where the pipeline is scheduled to be located next to the camp?
It runs...
In the microphone, please. How close is it?
I don't know the number of miles. I look at it on the map. So it looks, it's probably ten miles maybe?
Okay.
Something like that. It's the, the camp is located in a, in a triangle between two streams, and both of those streams are impacted.
Okay, great. I'll make sure and look at that on a map so I, I know. Pam Driscoll?
Here you go. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Pam Driscoll. I live in Dexter, Oregon. Beloved former Oregon Governor Tom McCall said in nineteen seventy-three, "If the salmon and steelhead are running and abundant, then as far as I'm concerned, God knows that all is well in this world. The health of the environment is good if the salmon and steelhead are around. It is that simple. The rivers flowing into Coos Bay are the spawning route for thirty percent of Oregon's co-host salmon. This project will hurt fish populations, the fishing industry, and threaten over four hundred waterways, drinking water sources for twelve, public water systems, and contribute to global warming. Protecting our water is critically important now more than ever. Reducing greenhouse gas emissions and making our state more resilient should be a top priority, and we have twelve years or less to avoid the most dire consequences of climate change." In twenty sixteen, FERC denied the Jordan Cove LNG project application stating that, quote, "Because the record does not support a finding that the public benefits of the Pacific Connector pipeline outweigh the adverse effects on landowners, we deny Pacific Connector's request for certificate authority to construct and operate its project," unquote. In early twenty seventeen, project backers reapplied under the Trump administration, which has stacked FERC with new appointees. "Let's work to bring jobs to Oregon that are sustainable. Wind turbine and solar panel manufacturing, hemp processing plants, regenerative and organic agriculture to Coos Bay and throughout Oregon, work we can be proud of." Governor McCall said it best in nineteen eighty-two. "Oregon is demure and lovely and ought to play a little hard to get, and I think you'll be just as sick as I am if you find it is nothing but a hungry hussy throwing yourself at every stinking smokestack that's offered. In this case, it's a stinking fossil fuel pipeline and a dangerous gas terminal." Lastly, from Governor Kate Brown, "Future generations will judge us not on the fact of global climate change, but on what we do to tackle it. This is an easy decision if you want to be on the right side of history."
Thank you for that history lesson, Ms. Driscoll. Forgotten how colorful Governor McCall could be. Kelly O'Hanley?
It's kind of crumpled.
That's all right. They've been through several hearings now.
Kelly O'Hanley, O apostrophe, H-A-N-L-E-Y. The sixty biggest fracking firms are not generating enough cash to cover their operating and capital expenses. From mid-two thousand twelve to mid-two thousand seventeen, they had a negative cash flow of thirty-six billion dollars per year. In the first quarter of two thousand eighteen, only five of the top twenty fracking companies generated more cash than they spent. So how could this be? Well, they have been able to take advantage of the very unusually low interest rates that started with the financial crisis of two thousand eight. They've been helped out by those in Wall Street who have been willing to give them capital and collect big fat fees. Private equity firms have made money, but not necessarily because the fracking companies produce profits. They've been able to sell one company to the next. As long as investors are willing to believe that profits are just around the corner, this scheme will work until it doesn't. The DSL has been asked to decide whether the project would represent the best use of Oregon's waters. Is there a possibility that Pembina could fail? And if so, what would be the risks to Oregon's waters? Should we toss the dice, hope for the best, or consider declining this amazing offer? I invite you and everybody in the room to do your own financial research on what I've just said. Consider the rising competition from the renewable energy sector and how that'll affect finances, and consider the kind of ever-changing political climate, both domestically and internationally, and how that might affect financial stability and indirectly, or actually directly, Oregon's waters. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Let me go back up to the list. Shane Nels?
Hi, my name's Shane Nels. I'm the president of Ironworkers Local Twenty-Nine in Portland, Oregon. I represent fourteen hundred women and men working, earning, living, family wage jobs. I'd like to thank you, Director Walker, and staff for facilitating a good forum and a fair process for this public comment period, and listening to all the facts and figures and not just the emotional testimony, although those are moving. We like to work on facts and figures and science. We believe that this is a good, responsible project going to be built by responsible contractors that pay very well, and the reason why they pay well is not because they have to, but they want to be responsible contractors. And they also want to hire the best that the state has to offer, the best highly trained and skilled women and men of the building trades. This is, this project is committed to lifting up the community. The project is committed to mitigate all issues, environmental and otherwise, and I'm asking to continue with that fair process and please approve this removal fill permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Peyton Johnston? You're right there.
Yep. My name is Peyton Johnston, J-O-H-N-S-T-O-N. I'm a union ironworker out of Local Twenty-Nine in the Oregon District. I would like to show support for this project.
Go ahead and keep going.
I'd like to show support in this project because I could have the opportunity to work on this project, which would help me succeed in life and better myself with my career. It will also help raise my family and keep food on the table for not just my family, but all my brothers and sisters that could potentially be a part of this. Please approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Joyce?
Hi, my name is Kevin Joyce. That's K-E-L-Y-C-E. Again, I'd like to say thank you for hearing us today. One of the things I would like to go ahead and actually point out is some of the options here that we might possibly have that I hope people are looking into because people who are worried about the environment obviously do have some good, good points to be making. But one thing that was said in Kate Brown's, in her campaign, was the increased productivity that, that jobs bring, and that's businesses with workers can produce and sell more goods and services, increasing revenue in which fuel additional growth in jobs. Better, more efficient service could result from having smaller group claimants and poor welfare and public needs. More jobs create without a virtuous cycle of growth and a stronger economy. This is from her campaign. Not only was that used in her campaign, but she also thought that those same kind of revenues that could be brought in from taxes could be used to mitigate the very things that the people who are fighting against this job are talking about. We could put the money into infrastructure. We could put it into cleaning up rivers and lakes. We could put the money into actually changing and using more green energy, okay, or as far as renewable energy. Those things are, are there. Those jobs, this is talking about bringing or somewhere as a thousand to five thousand jobs, bringing in a thousand dollars a week, which is two hundred and sixty million dollars a year for tax revenue. That money can be used to mitigate the very effects that this job would have. And why wouldn't we even think about that? Why couldn't we consider that? I would propose that that would be what we would want to consider. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for listening to all of us tonight. I'm representing myself as well as my family members, friends, and neighbors who can't, cannot testify due to being other obligations, and also people who are too far back in the crowd to talk tonight. Please deny this permit. Building this gas line will kill many animals and destroy the waterways and threaten our drinking water. Leaks will happen, and they will threaten our drinking water, the animals, the people, and the plant life. This high-pressure gas explodes due to an accident, earthquake, or tsunami would cause massive forest fires and destroy pristine waterways in the Coos Bay area. It's not in the public interest to permit this project. This project will have a negative impact on fishing, rafting, camping, swimming, and the economy. Please deny this permit. If granted, it could easily destroy the drinking water and the environment. I'm a union member. I believe in a living wage jobs, but they must be safe jobs, and they must create a safe environment for all. It's not, we don't want to mitigate damage after it happens. We want to prevent damage from happening. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Loretta Houston?
Loretta Houston, H-U-S-T-O-N, now reside in Cottage Grove, Oregon. I too am here to ask you to deny this project. Surely we can all agree we are living in extreme and uncertain times. Unfortunately, we tend to normalize and lose perspective of what is really at stake, the health of our living ecosystems, which we all depend on. This Jordan Cove pipeline, which covers two hundred and thirty miles of high-pressure fracked gas across hundreds of life-supporting watersheds, is simply not worth taking the risk. This project was denied in twenty sixteen, and here we are again, facing the same threats to frac, drill, dredge, pollute, and add more lethal methane towards further climate chaos. Yes, we understand that there is a crisis with jobs in our rural communities, and I think we really seriously need to look towards safer, cleaner solutions. We just, within the, they just removed the Controlled Substance Act with industrial hemp, and I would like to, I would like to see that become a project for Coos Bay, and there's other solutions which I hope we look forward to. Thank you.
Thank you. Diane? Say your name.
Oh, Diane Meisenhelter. Sorry, I handed you the sheet.
That's okay. And if you could spell your last name, the transcription is, I'll copy it.
Diane Meisenhelter, M-E-I-S-E-N-H-E-L-T-E-R. Please deny this permit to the, the permit to this Canadian company that has failed to adequately demonstrate how they will mitigate the unknown and untold long-term damages associated with this ill-conceived project. Many people have already spoken to the environmental impacts, so I'm not going to repeat all that as well as the climate change, the critical climate change impact that this project will have. I also work on community energy preparedness, and I know how sorely unprepared we are for overdue, significant seismic subduction zone activities, and as well as the increasing threats of wildfires. It's nothing less than crazy to continue adding miles of volatile, pressurized, flammable, and potentially toxic gases to this unthinkable emergency mix in these high-risk areas. How can you be sure that even under the best of circumstances, there won't be damaging leaks? And we've seen those health and safety impacts in other communities. We need to create jobs through national and state Green New Deal, and we can do far better in terms of creating long-term jobs through conservation, protection, and clean energy solutions than supporting a short-sighted, profiteering Canadian company who has little regard for Oregonians and the long-term best usage of our land and water resources. You guys are in the unique position of being able to do the right thing, and we urge you to deny this permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, did I forget who you are?
Frank Poliat.
Oh, okay.
I'm number forty-six, I'm very, very old.
I don't believe, I don't believe you're very, very old, but yes, I skipped over you by accident, number forty-seven.
Oh, thanks.
Frank Poliat. Come on.
Could be dead by now.
That's all right. I'll take your card.
What?
Is it, I'll take your card.
Oh, I've got my notes on it.
Oh, okay.
I defaced them. It's part of my tradition. Yeah.
I'm sixty-two.
I'm seventy.
Oh, well, you're just, you're just a few more years. I don't consider myself very, very old. I'm going to take it all as humor.
You're not seventy.
All right. There you go.
My name is Frank Poliat.
Spell your last name first.
And I've lived most of my life in Oregon, and one reason I didn't have children is because I got turned on to the fact that this is not, you know, an economy that can grow, expand exponentially, and that the carbon footprint of an average American, or average white American anyhow, is about seven times that of a third-world person. So we started out with many feet of topsoil when we invaded this, these continents, and now we've got a few inches left, and we wouldn't be starving to death were it not for some scientific discoveries such as how to create synthetic fertilizer and some hybridized plants, but that's not going to go on forever. So Malthus was right, we're just eating our way right off the planet. We have dispelled this country from end to end. We've broken any, every contract we ever made with Native Americans. We're just like very greedy people who love to reproduce and make up any kind of excuse we need to, to take the very last steps to our own destruction. This is by every measure a completely insane idea, you know, one among thousands. There are ten thousand toxic sites in the United States. Our economy is based on the presumption of that GNP can grow, you know, every year, forever. Well, that's like pulling not one rabbit out of a hat, that's like pulling a million rabbits out of a hat. This is one planet. You just can't keep...
So you need to talk into that direction.
This one? Oh, it's this one?
No, it's both of them, but go ahead and scroll my direction.
Talk this direction, not...
Talk that direction. Okay, yeah. So, I mean, it, no, there's no such thing as a growth economy in a, in a planet that's limited to here. If some people, if a whole lot of people want to go to Mars, it's fine with me. That's all I've got to say.
Okay, good timing because someone's cell phone went off. And please check your cell phones again. That's the second cell phone I've heard this evening. Okay. You must be Jan. So if you come up, I will call some people. Did I?
Yeah, I did. I'm just waiting for her.
Oh, you're waiting for Jan. Okay. Could I have you stand aside because I'm going to call down eleven people.
Thank you. So Jan, if you just hold on one second, you can come up to the microphone because I'm going to fill those seats. Bianca Valera, Russ Thompson, Catherine Mullis, Anne Littlewood, Misty Frost, Sarah Farahat, Monique Hall, Trace Mills, Ann Heron, and Susan McConson, I think.
Okay. Yes, I'm ready. Thank you for that.
I'm Jan Zuckerman, Z-U-C-K-E-R-M-A-N, and I'm a teacher, and I am here with some of my students who have asked me to speak on their behalf. Yoko Koda...
Yoko Koda French, who's sitting right there, and Nash Kelly, who's right next to her. They'd like you to know that they've participated in stream restoration projects at school and understand what it takes to fix the unfixable. It can take years to restore a natural habitat, and often, it is impossible to ever repair the damage done. That is why they are worried about the irreversible impact on fish from warmer waters due to clearcuts, erosion, and turbidity. They know from their science classes that fish can -- that fish need clear, cold, clean water to live, and even one degree of warming can prove fatal. My students would like to know how this project will protect Oregon's fish and wildlife while laying down hundreds of miles of pipeline through four hundred waterways, including their public rivers. They would like to know if the DSL is aware of Oregon's already suffering and dwindling salmon runs and what this means for their and our ecosystem. They've asked me to tell you that as youth, they are inheriting the planet and are faced with many challenges that the older generation like myself and you have ignored or couldn't deal with. They would like the DSL to take on the challenge now to stop the irreversible damage to our ecosystem and protect them by denying the removal fill permit for the Jordan Cove and the Pacific Connector Pipeline. Thank you.
Thank you. Bianca Bellerah.
Hi. I want to thank you both so much for being so patient and listening to all of us today. Okay, so my name is Bianca Bellerah. Do you need me to spell my last name? Thanks.
Oh. Not good?
Yeah. I don't want it to be too precarious. That's good. Cool.
I want you to spell your last name.
Okay. My last name is Bellerah, B as in boy, A-L-L-A-R-A. Okay. So, my name is Bianca Bellerah, and I live in Grants Pass, Oregon, in southern Oregon, and I came up here to speak on behalf of being a resident of the Rogue Valley. Yeah, I'm here to speak in favor of denying the permits for the LNG pipeline. I'm thirty-two, young enough to be terrified about my future, like the seventeen-year-olds who spoke earlier, but also old enough to have already chosen a life path in the course of my life to reflect the kind of sustainable world that I want to see. So, I've already grown up a bit, I'm more of an adult, I've been choosing things that I can do to contribute to a healthy world for hopefully everybody. I moved to southern Oregon from living in urban cities to live in one of the least developed and most wild and biodiverse parts left of our continental United States in order to farm, to live locally, and to hopefully serve for local office one day. In the time that I've been living my dream and building community closer to nature in southern Oregon, I've been praying for a better future for everyone. Thank you. Critical forest fires have become a normal part of our lives. We are talking forest fires that blot out the whole sky for six weeks at a time, ruin our summers, and keep people indoors for their public safety. For weeks at a time, these fires are only predicted to increase as a yearly occurrence with the rise in temperatures. I and many of my community members see these forest fires as enormous crisis, immediately putting our homes, our air, and our health at risk. I did not see this coming, and my dream is at risk. I see that we in southern Oregon already have this ecological problem to solve, and it is already a heavy one without adding the risks of a three-hundred-mile drilling project going through these same forests and lands. I'm just an amateur ecologist, but I don't see a drilling project as helping our already current fragile ecological problem. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anne, I wish you well in running for office someday.
Appreciate it.
It takes courage and dedication and hard work.
Thanks.
Because I've done it. Russ Thompson. Ooh, Russ is not here. Okay. Kathy Mullis. Did I not call these people? I did. They're just not here. All right. Anne Littlewood. Uh-oh. Misty Frost. Okay, thank you.
My name is Misty Frost, and yes, my parents were hippies. And it shouldn't be no surprise that I'm an environmental justice community organizer for a nonprofit, and I work every day with communities that are living under the consequences living close to big industry. In West Eugene, where I reside, that community has been struggling with the consequences for many years now, and many people that live close to industries have -- their property values have gone down because of underground plumes of toxins that have leaked into their wells, and they can't use their groundwater anymore. And for -- but for some reason, that's the environmentalist's fault, because they're the ones that exposed that these chemicals were there and that they were coming from the big industry. So, how that works out, I don't know. But I just want to urge you to deny this pipeline. Also, a lot of people have been talking about water. I am on the board of directors of -- on El Rapa, which is the Lane Regional Air Protection Agency in Eugene, Lane Spring, Lane County, and we get many, many residents calling in complaining about toxic air, and there is nothing that my agency can do to help them because the industries are too powerful. Oregonians have said no to this project twice. Three times a charm, huh? Climate change is the most significant issue of our time. I'm a millennial. Believe me, I need a job. I'm swimming in school debt, and the feelings of despair that I feel when I witness climate change catastrophe after catastrophe is overwhelming. And these companies have proven over and over again to be irresponsible. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for your service on El Rapa. Okay. Sarah Farahat. Farahat?
You want me to spell my name?
Yeah, please. And pronounce it.
Farahat. F-A-R-A-H-A-T. Salaam alaikum. My name is Sarah Farahat, and my sister and I live in Portland, close to the Willamette, the Columbia, the Sandy, the Clackamas, and the Weshugel, amongst many other beautiful waterways. Each morning, we drink water from the rain of the Bull Run watershed. Water has always been my refuge, one of the few places I feel relaxed and whole. We come from water people. We are made up of water. My father grew up near the Nile and spent his free time visiting the Mediterranean and the Red Seas. Some of my earliest memories are of these waters in Egypt and the creeks and floodplains of my childhood home in Illinois near the Great Lake Michigan, Michigami. The most recent climate reports say that we have ten years left to reduce our CO2 emissions by fifty percent before we slide into climate disaster. I wonder how in good conscience the state of Oregon could decide to support the JCPP at such a time as this. If we are to encourage anything in our state, it should be working towards massive reductions in fuel usage, support for companies, unions, and organizations innovating for our future and the future of our children. I'm thirty-nine years old, and this year, I would like to have a child. The future looks so drastically frightening that my friends ask me if I really want to bring a kid into this world, and I don't know. I'm also here to support the sovereignty over this land by the indigenous peoples of Coos Bay and all the other communities whose homelands are impacted by this pipeline project. As an uninvited guest here, I wish to stress how important it is for us to take the lead from people who have known this land for thousands of years. This project is not in my interest. It is not in the interest of my future child. It is not in the interest of the land I cultivate for food, the water I drink, swim, and play in. It is not in the interest of the air that I breathe. I strongly urge you, Ms. Walker, and the staff of the ODSL, to deny the removal fill permit for the Jordan Cove LNG and the Pacific Connector Pipeline project. I also urge newly re-elected Governor Kate Brown to come out in strong opposition of this project, and I look forward to our state becoming a truly visionary example of how to move towards a more sustainable future that supports all living beings and our earth for generations to come. Thank you.
Monique Hall.
My name is Monique Hall, H-A-L-L. I live in Eugene, Oregon. I urge you to consider the irreversible impacts of polluted drinking water for thousands of Oregonians, the long-term harm to future generations, pollution of local surrounding farms. This proposed project would impact nearly seven hundred private landowners, four hundred streams and rivers, and four hundred and eighty-five waterways would be affected, and six miles of wetlands. Please say no to this proposed Jordan Cove energy project. Thank you.
We're going to call down six more people. Patricia Bellamy, James New, Nick Dykes, Kathy Spofford, Tim Norberen, and Sylvia Yamada. And Trace Mills, please come up and testify.
Excuse me. Can I just let people by? I'll stop that.
You want us to bring that up?
No, I can bend over or project my voice a little bit.
Thank you.
It's a -- my name's Trace Mills. It's M-I-L-L-S. I'm a Union Iroquois, a local twenty-nine, lived in this area, and throughout the Willamette Valley my whole life, raised four kids, used the waterways quite a bit. I'm here more on a personal thing with this. I do understand the idea and the need to protect what we have. Our state has gone above and beyond most in these, so I want to make sure that my voice is just simply heard, that we take the median. We don't take the extreme sides of either views. We look at what's best for everybody, and we make an honest choice. Is it going to mitigate all risks? No, we're not going to mitigate all risk. With development comes risk. The extra development that this project will do without -- throughout the Willamette Valley will increase our ability to do more in the future, and that's pretty much it. I just -- I'm in support of it. While I don't agree with everything about it, I do believe it is, in whole, a positive. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anne Heron.
Anne Heron, that's H-E-R-O-N. I'm a retired teacher, and I began my teaching career in Coos Bay. I taught at Coos River Learning Center and for two years at North Bend Banger School. So, I have some acquaintance with the area, and I have some acquaintance with how hard a struggle it's been there for people to make a living and how that affects the whole population. However, I am speaking against this project, and my main concern is safety. Building an export terminal in an earthquake and tsunami zone seems to me to be really hubris. I admire the men who've shared their expertise here in pipe fitting, and I'm sure that they would want to make it as safe as possible, but we've all seen when these accidents occur, oh, it was somebody up at the higher levels who was cutting corners and wanted to get it done fast, and so, whoops, they didn't do all the safety things, and then you have bad results. I've visited Cordova, Alaska, five or six years after the Valdez oil spill. They were still waiting for their payment from the company. These things happen, and I'm very concerned about the clarity and the purity of our waters. I think it's one of the best things Oregon's got going for it, and I've lived here for most of my life by choice. That was one of the things that drew me, and I just think it's very important that we not play around with the quality of our water. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Maconsen.
Thank you. And a lot of people have talked about the scientific reasons this should not pass. I want to just tell you a little bit about my summer. I went down to Klamath Basin this summer and spent some time down there, and you couldn't kayak in the refuge because the waters were so low. You know, as you know probably, we've been trying to save the salmon runs in that region, and they're failing. From Klamath Basin, I made my way to Colorado, and it was June, and by the time I got to Colorado, there was no snow in the Fourteeners, the mountains that I used to climb as a kid. There was no snow. I'd never seen it like that ever in my life. And Fourth of July, I spent with my sister and her husband clearing people out of their homes in Basalt for the second-largest fire in Colorado started by tracer bullets. On the way home, the Klamath Basin was -- Lower Klamath Basin in California was on fire. Probably three weeks after, four weeks after I got home, my good friend's house was burned down in Paradise. This pipeline is going in across our waters in an area that is suffering drought so badly that it's not just a burst pipeline that will cause fires, it's their equipment. The danger of fire in southern Oregon is so high, and watching this fire in Colorado, it creates its own weather now. In Paradise, there were fire tornadoes. These aren't things firemen have seen before, and it's getting worse every year, along with the air and along with the water quality around these fires. Thank you.
Thank you. Patricia Bellamy.
Good evening. Thank you for hearing us this evening. My name is actually Sharon Miller. I'm here present -- reading Patricia Bellamy's submissions, and she's ill this evening.
Okay.
Patricia is a retired registered nurse and has submitted a cover letter stating the Oregon Nurses Association currently has fifteen thousand registered nurse members and believes the Jordan Cove LNG project, including the Pacific Connector gas pipeline, poses grave short-term and long-term health and safety risks for our communities and its citizens. Their letter to use concerns the drinking water safety, climate concerns, and earthquake and tsunami risks, and in the interest of brevity, I will just submit the letter, but those are the areas they address. They conclude that this project will degrade Oregonians' water quality, harm the health of communities throughout the region, contribute to climate change, and irrevocably alter our landscape. This project is not in the best interests of the state of Oregon. ONA opposes this project and asks you to deny applicable permits for the Jordan Cove Energy Project and the Pacific Connector Gas Pipeline. Additionally, I'll submit their resolution, which was passed at the 2018 House of Delegates. It states that whereas the Jordan Cove Natural Gas Export Terminal and the Pacific Connector Pipeline would become the largest carbon dioxide, highly explosive methane polluter, and climate disruptor in Oregon, fugitive methane emissions from the U.S. drilling and fracking operations, storage, and ancillary infrastructure are higher than previously supposed, and methane is a major greenhouse gas, and the Jordan Cove Project would greatly increase the incidence of climate health impacts. Therefore, be it resolved, the Oregon Nurses Association is a professional organization and a labor union, a member of the labor community committed to ensuring strong workforce standards and employment opportunities in our communities, and thus recognizes the Jordan Cove Project's connection to providing living wage jobs in the region. However, we affirm that the adverse long-term impacts and cost to both health and our climate significantly outweigh any limited job-creating benefit to be gained locally. Thank you.
Sharon, what was your last name?
Sharon Miller.
Okay. Great. And thank you for being here.
Can I leave this with you?
Yes, absolutely. I'll take your card. I hope Patricia gets better.
We hope so.
James New.
My name is James New. I'm a member of 350 Eugene and a retired union carpenter. N-E-U is the last name. There are many reasons the Jordan Cove Energy Project should not be permitted. Due to time constraints, my testimony -- Due to time constraints, my testimony will briefly touch on several of many reasons. However, my submitted comments for the record will go into more detail from ecological, constitutional, moral, social equity, and health and safety aspects. Pembama, the Canadian Corporation's proposed project applicant should be denied the removal fill permit to operate this facility because it would deny Oregon citizens their right to protection of private lands, its drinking water, forests, estuaries, rivers, streams, watersheds, wildlife, cultural resources, beaches, and its recreational and commercial areas. Most importantly, this project and its effects of its product lifecycle violates the public trust doctrine of the Constitution where our government and its affiliated bodies are responsible for protecting current and future generations from natural resource damage. In 1955, the federal government determined and reported the extraction, transportation, storage, distribution, and combustion of fossil fuel products. Coal oil and gas would lead to global warming and to natural resource damages. When those governments' reports were issued, the level of carbon dioxide in the atmosphere was at 312 parts per millionth. In 1960s, the carbon majors Exxon, Chevron, and others issued internal reports that the state of burning the fossil fuels would have continued, lead to species decline and extinction. We have increased almost 100 parts per millionth in 55 years and are currently at 410. Ansel Adams stated, "We shouldn't have to fight our own government to protect our environment. The atmosphere, the air we breathe, the water we drink, the earth we till are all assets, natural resources that V S L infere our test with protecting." Thank you.
Thank you. Nick Dykis.
Hi, my name is Nick Dykis. My last name is D-I-K-A-S. Good evening, Ms. Walker. I live in Eugene, and I'm 32 years old. I took vacation time from my job to be here today and represent people my age. I'm making a small sacrifice because I'm worried that my fellow Oregonians will be forced to make intolerable sacrifices as a result of the impacts that this pipeline will have on our waterways. What comes to mind when people think about Oregon? Rain, trees, clean water, the breathtaking coast, good fish, outdoor recreation. These qualities brought me to Oregon, and they're why it is my home. How is the destruction that this pipeline would cause consistent with what we hold most dear as Oregonians? The pipeline will cross hundreds of waterways, including 12 that supply drinking water and some of our most iconic waterways. Open cut crossings will require temporary damming, which will make it difficult for fish to migrate, reproduce, and grow. Horizontal drilling will destroy sacred tribal artifacts and cause fracouts, spilling lubricants that foul fragile salmon and shellfish habitat and drinking water. There were dozens of fracouts during the construction of a much smaller pipeline in Coos County recently. Blasting will cause landslides and sedimentation. Dredging Coos Bay will release toxins that have settled in the bay. What will our neighbors do when they have no fish to sell, no water to drink, no clean waters to attract recreation? This is not to mention that when this pipeline leaks, the gas will creep along unseen until a spark lights a bonfire in the wilderness. There is no way we can respond before a massive loss of life. How many lives and livelihoods are expendable in exchange for a limited amount of jobs and tax revenue? Ms. Walker, according to O R S 196.825, you have a responsibility to stop this project if it is not in the best interests of Oregonians. There is no amount of regulation on this project that can ensure public health, conservation, and protection of all the other uses of our waterways. Stop the Jordan Cove Pacific Connector Pipeline now, and stop it for good. Thank you.
Thank you. Say hello to Eugene for me.
He will. Thank you.
I'm going to call up, we're running towards the end. We're running towards the end. I'm going to call up, there's a couple of landowners that I'd like to hear from that are also seniors. Liz Hyde and Barbara Brown. Could you come down, please? And, let's see, I'll just do that for now because I've got a couple more here. Kathy Spofford, did you come down? Tim Norgrin.
Hi, my name's Tim Norgrin. That's N-O-R-G-R-E-N. I'm a member of Local 737 Labor's Union, and I started out in 2008 doing wind turbines. I voted, I went down and testified in support of those because that was my conscience to do that. I'm here for a similar reason today, to oppose this terminal. I have watched funny things happen in Washington through the union years. I believe strongly that if we spend as much of our dues money and as much effort on supporting clean energy projects, and for that matter, on supporting manufacturing by countering these free trade agreements that have been shipping all our jobs overseas, we could be building and supporting manufacturing, maintaining those things here. Instead, we're shipping cheap fuel overseas to make it easier for these companies to outsource our jobs and the jobs of a whole lot of other people. To me, that's just bad business. It's not good for any of the members here. Clean energy projects usually happen in rural areas. On top of that, we've all got families. We don't want to create earthquake scenarios where they've never been before, or toxify the water, or dump that toxic water into food crops in California because it's cheaper there than water, thanks to climate change and drought. Climate change is a huge thing. I mean, it's, I don't believe that 10 to 12 years even is going to be enough. We're looking at some major feedback loops. We've got 90-some percent of the scientists, those not under corporate payments, who are saying that there's feedback loops coming and are actively happening right now that are going to be causing a lot more problems really quick. We're already seeing in this country, let alone in places like Syria where there's wars started years ago over it. People are heading into drought. We're killing ourselves, and if we want to support our families, we should get our manufacturing back and stop pushing for these projects. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sylvia. Can I just ask you to step just a little bit closer to the mic so that we can make sure the way he gets it?
Okay. From Corvallis, Oregon. I have been studying crabs in Oregon estuaries, including Coos Bay, for over 20 years. I am concerned that the construction of the Jordan Cove Energy Project could impact important habitats for native species, including the Dungeness crab. The Dungeness crab fishery is the most valuable commercial fishery in Oregon. In a good year, landings yield $100 million to the Oregon economy. The highest number of juvenile crabs are found in soft sediments and eelgrass beds of estuaries. This is where the young crabs find food and shelter from predators. In my study site along Trans-Pacific Parkway, which is right by Jordan Cove, I have consistently trapped an average of 15 young crabs per trap, Dungeness crabs, that is. The importance of this nursery habitat has to be kept in mind when the trenches dug in Haynes Inlet, the Trans-Pacific Parkway is expanded, and an upland area is cut out of the land to create a berth for ocean-going vessels. Not only will the turbidity during the construction phase be a concern to the ecological community, the ongoing dredging to maintain the berth and the shipping channels will continue to be a disturbance to the ecosystem. In a study designed to simulate a dredging operation, between 45 and 85% of the Dungeness crabs died. In summary, construction and maintenance of the Jordan Cove LNG Terminal will result in habitat loss for native species, including valuable nursery habitat for the Dungeness crab. Thank you.
Ma'am, have you been studying these crabs for 20 years as part of a scientific project?
Yes.
And have you published that project?
Yes, I have published, yes.
Could you provide us with your published study?
I've worked on a lot of native crabs, and also, the data that I'm presenting in my written testimony is in relation to monitoring the European green crab in Oregon estuaries. And I've been catching a lot of young Dungeness in the process.
Okay. So that'll come in your written testimony?
Yeah, I submitted it.
That will be most illustrative for me, so thank you. All right. Two landowners, I called them, and I can't find you on my list, but one of you, you're here somewhere. I had to skip ahead. Just come on forward and down here and state your name.
I'm Elizabeth Hyde, H-Y-D-E. Okay, our family farm is in Camas Valley, a rural community southwest of Roseburg, which is located within the Oregon Coastal Management Zone. The proposed pipeline is slated to cross 485 streams and rivers across southern Oregon. One of those rivers it crosses is a middle fork of the Coquille River, which is a fish-bearing stream on our farm. In addition, it would cross the Jimbilu Crick and another Itner Minten Stream, also on our farm. The plan which Pacific Connector proposes to lay the pipe across these bodies of waters is reckless. On our farm, where the proposed 36-inch diameter pipeline crosses the Coquille River, there's a thick sandstone bedrock in the bottom of that riverbed. The proposed crossing would require excavating the riverbed. This could cause extensive erosion and disrupt fish and aquatic life in the river. We're also concerned about the algae bloom in that same area. The construction would demolish trees along the riverbanks, including the large growth and nesting trees, which are a natural barrier for the fish. The proposed plans would lay the pipe half-exposed in the river. The 50-foot-wide pipeline path that crosses Oregon would be treated with chemicals and herbicides to keep the land barren. The runoff from these chemicals would find its way to the river and drainage ditches and so forth. I urge the state land board to protect Oregon's environment and wildlife by using its authority to deny the Pacific Connector's request for permits. In Oregon, our history is leading the United States in addressing environmental concerns, not bowing to foreign country desires, big corporation profits, and political interests. Thank you.
Thank you. And Barbara.
Oh, and here's a copy of my sister.
Oh, okay. Oops. Sorry.
My name is Barbara Brown, and I also oppose the Jordan Cove Liquid Natural Gas and the Pacific Connector Pipeline. My sister talked about our property, and today I'm going to comment on behalf of our neighbor, Juanita Saul. Juanita has been unable to attend other public meetings to give comments because the nearest one was held in the evening 25 miles from her home. As she is in her 80s, she does not drive at night. Also, it is nearly impossible for her to research the relevant documents as she does not have computer access, and the local county library has been closed. Juanita came to her home as a young bride, and she has lived in her home on the property for over 60 years. The proposed pipeline would leave our family's farm and cut directly through the middle of her small acreage. The proposed pipeline will lie between her house and her pump house, where the well providing her only source of water is located. The pipeline is well within 150 feet of her only drinking water source used for both her and her livestock. The proposed pipeline will be built at one of the lowest pipeline quality standards because it is in a rural area. The proposed right-of-way would take up the bulk of the space between her house and pump house, and then run through her front yard before leaving her property to cross Percival Road. Juanita is deeply concerned with the impact this proposed pipeline would have on her day-to-day life, water quality, and safety, as well as the value of her property. She worries about it daily. She has worried about it for the last 14 years when her property was first identified as being in the pipeline path. On behalf of Juanita, I am asking that you deny the permit for Pacific Connector Pipeline and Jordan Cove, and put an end to this madness. It is not right that a Canadian company should be allowed to jeopardize the property and well-being of Oregonians, particularly senior Oregonians, not for 14 years and not for the rest of their lives. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for driving this far. I appreciate it. I've got time for two more people to testify, so I'm just sort of going to wing it here. I have Edith Gillis, who's a firefighter I'd like to hear from, and Seth Arbogast. You've got yourself as a veteran. Let's hear from you.
Thank you. I was on the first women's firefighting crew in the state of Oregon. My name again is Edith Gillis, G-I-L-L-I-S. And I am saying, this project will increase the frequency, the severity, the quantity, the quality, the hazard, and the cost of wildfires. At the same time, this project will reduce the amount of tax dollars that are available for the community to fight the wildfires. At the same time, it'll cause so many harms to people who are living in the area that they will be relying on tax dollars that will then not be available for fighting the fires and for saving lives. The process of constructing this, of dredging, of having the roads, of having the parking spaces, not only could start new fires through the sparks of the trucks, the diesel gas, but the projects also would cause the local plants to be dying, and there'd be more of a fire hazard and quickly catch on fire. Not even counting methane itself as highly flammable and explosive, and all the toxins that are in the fracking gas, that we haven't even invented a way of purifying and cleaning them out. The harm to our economy would mean that all these people that have moved there hoping to have jobs would be fooled as the last over half a century. Every major fossil fuel project that promises jobs does not provide jobs to the local folks. They bring their own, hire guns that they know they have, blackmail that will not tattle on the poisons. Tim worked on a railroad where they were lying and hiding and causing all sorts of hazards, endangering the lives of workers who are silenced and not to be able to tell it. This happens with every fossil fuel project. All those people then who came to the area to get jobs won't have jobs, and all the people that have lost their homes, that raised the insurance and lowered the bond ratings of the cities, we wouldn't be able to suck up the water because of turbidity and the harm, then we couldn't put out the fire. And then fires would also burn with more of the toxicity and the gases, so that we don't even have a way to put it out.
Thank you, ma'am. Seth, do you want to close out our hearing tonight?
Thank you for your time, and let me speak. I have two kids at home. I have a five-year-old and a two-year-old, and I think in between trying to decide on what I was going to say up here tonight, I've been thinking about what I'm going to tell or might have to tell my kids in years when they're dealing with the negative environmental impacts would be caused from this. For them to not have clean drinking water, to me, it just seems like such a basic thing that we should be focusing on to ensure, so that way our children, their children, have the basic need met. And we need to be focusing on sustainable infrastructure and energy, and not polluting the environment, because those environmental harms are going to come back on us. We drink the water, we grow food from the soil, and we need to protect the environment and protect ourselves and our children as well. And I'm hoping that we will oppose and deny the permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Seth. Mark, could you bring Bob in here so I can get him to answer a couple of questions? And that brings us to the close of the hearing, and I've got a couple of things to go over with you. Oh, it's hard to get up when you've been sitting a while, but what I want you to do right now is, you were such a fantastic audience, other than a few cell phones going off, you were great. You were so respectful. So please, give yourself a round of applause for all the speakers who spoke tonight. I'm having Bob Lobdell come in here. Bob is one of our technical folks on staff who has this application in front of him. Bob is one of our technical folks on staff who has this application in front of him, and I want him to tell you about what's next, because we always get that question.
Thank you. So the comment period is going to be closing on the 3rd of February. It's going to take me a couple, three weeks to be able to get through the volume of comments. As of this morning, I think I had about 7,000 on the computer and a couple thousand written comments to go through, plus tonight's. So it's going to take a bit of time, but basically the intent of what we're doing is we're going to be going through every single comment that was received, good, bad, or indifferent, and identifying issues that are substantive to the removal fill law, direct impacts to wetlands and waters of the state. From there, we're going to put together basically what we call an issues letter going to the company, and that's going to be asking that they either address, provide more information or whatever is needed to answer, you know, basically the public comments that come in. From there, we expect the company is going to request an extension of time because we're going to be really short on the 90-day timeframe. Currently, that ends on the 5th of March, so we expect an extension to allow them time to address public comments. From there, depending on what comes up, I don't know how long it's going to take, but there will be back and forth addressing those issues. And eventually, within the timelines where the extension's provided, we will be making a decision.
Thank you, Bob. Don't go away, just in case someone has a further question. So as Bob mentioned, the comment deadline is February 3, 5:00 p.m. So if you're having trouble with your computer, you forgot to get it in the mail, and you sent something to us at 5:01, we can't accept it. We have to hold hard and fast. So please get your comments in. It's easy to do if you have a computer and you want to do it on the web, or handwrite us a letter and send it in. Postal mail still works. It's a lot more than five cents a stamp these days, but it still works. Also, I think that I wanted to tell you once again how important your comments were tonight. I'm so glad many of you are going to submit additional detailed comments, for instance, on the crab study, that was important, all of the things you've talked about. So I really, from my perspective, want to thank you for taking the time to drive here, to sit here, and to participate. And some of you followed us to all these hearings, so hooray for you for sticking in there. And I'll take a few questions, and then we'll close out the hearing. Yes, sir?
Yeah, me and this gentleman here are capable of jamming almost about to get started. So maybe someday you want to have more world testimony, maybe that's over, but since I have the mic right now, please, make this pipeline. You are in a catastrophic situation, quoting Shakespeare's "World Theater is a Fire."
Okay, thank you, sir. I think we all heard that. Are there any questions rather than statements? Yes, ma'am?
Sir, this is the third time that Pabina has requested for this pipeline. Is there a limit to how many times you can ask?
There is no limit to how many times a thing can ask. The first two go-arounds, those applications were withdrawn. We've never made a decision on it. So this is the third go-around, and due process we cannot prevent.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, you know, with the government shutdown, we hear that our firefighters this year aren't being hired and trained currently, and we're not even really having a winter. A friend just posted pictures of the Cow Creek River that's extremely low, that's southern Oregon where I'm from. Two of my nephew and my sister and my mother live on tributaries of the rivers that will be affected. So I'm just wondering what kinds of plan we have in Oregon for this mega-fire season we're facing with extreme temperatures and extremely low rainfall? And also, are the workers planning on building a pipeline through wildfire smoke and wildfire?
Okay, you got to your question at the very end. The question that we can answer, let me try to summarize, because it was a very long question. She's concerned about the wildfire season, the fact the government is shut down and is not training our firefighters. I actually heard that on NPR this morning. And will the workers build the pipeline during a wildfire? First of all, I don't know what we're doing about the wildfire season, that's not our agency. Secondly, the project has not even been approved. It has multiple, multiple agencies that it has to go through to get approval, so I can't answer that question for you right now. It won't be, they won't be building it this year, as far as I know, even if we approve it, because there are other agencies that have to approve. And in fact, FERC, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, has a deadline of...
November, I think it's 27th or 29th this year.
Before they make a decision. So if FERC doesn't decide to go forward, the project goes nowhere. And some people have asked us, why are you making a decision on your removal fill permit before FERC is making its decision? Well, there's a good answer to that, and the good answer is that we have regulatory timelines built into our rules and statutes, and we are required to respond to an applicant within so many days. So that's why we are moving ahead with what we believe was a complete application. I'll take a couple more questions, and then we need to go in the very back.
Yeah, so this was, the proposal was that FERC denied the proposal in 2016, that's correct, yeah?
FERC denied the proposal in 2016, yes.
Are there any like changes, like major changes to FERC that have happened since then that might change the outcome of the proposal this time?
Are there changes to FERC that might change the outcome of the proposal? I can't answer that. I don't serve on FERC.
I don't know.
And we don't know. The personnel on FERC has changed, but that's all I know. Sir, right there with your hand.
Yes. Are you going to consider just the immediate impacts on Oregon state lands of this project? Or are you going to also consider the impact that this project is going to have for centuries?
Are we going to consider immediate impacts or century impacts? Mr. Lobdell, what are our requirements?
I'm going to make you answer that one.
Yeah, I don't have a good answer for that question. But besides dealing with the immediate issues, I don't know how we'd be looking out to 100 years from now. So I don't know how to answer your question.
I'll tell you, that'll be in internal conversation. And when we apply all of our rules and regs to this application, we will examine all of the issues that have been brought forward to us and whether we have the capacity or the requirement to answer all of those things. So we will be doing our best. And I'll take one more question, sir.
This is a mundane question. For those of us who've signed up to testify but didn't fit in the time scale, can we drop off our written testimony and leave it with you tonight?
Absolutely. Can you leave your testimony with us tonight? Yes, and you can leave it with us if you want to mail it in or fax it in or however you want to get it to us. You have until February 3rd, so please do so. All right, I'm going to have to close the hearing because we have a lot of personnel here who need to get home, and you all need to drive safely. Thank you very much for coming, it is very appreciated.
...water is located. The pipeline is where the well, the pipeline is well within 150 feet of her only drinking water source used for both her and her livestock. The proposed pipeline will be built at one of the lowest pipeline quality standards because it is in a rural area. The proposed right-of-way would take up the bulk of the space between her house and pump house and then run through her front yard before leaving her property to cross Percival Road. Juanita is deeply concerned with the impact this proposed pipeline would have on her day-to-day life, water quality, and safety, as well as the value of her property. She worries about it daily. She has worried about it for the last 14 years when her property was first identified as being in the pipeline path. On behalf of Juanita, I am asking that you deny the permit for Pacific Connector Pipeline and Jordan Cove and put an end to this madness. It is not right that a Canadian company should be allowed to jeopardize the property and well-being of Oregonians, particularly senior Oregonians, not for 14 years and not for the rest of their lives. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for driving this far. Appreciate it. I've got time for two more people to testify, so I'm just sort of going to wing it here. I have Edith Gillis, who's a firefighter I'd like to hear from, and Seth Arbogast. You've got yourself as a veteran, let's hear from you.
Thank you. I was on the first women's firefighting crew in the state of Oregon. My name again is Edith Gillis, G-I-L-L-I-S. And I am saying, this project will increase the frequency, the severity, the quantity, the quality, the hazard, and the cost of wildfires. At the same time, this project will reduce the amount of tax dollars that are available for the community to fight the wildfires. At the same time, it'll cause so many harms to people who are living in the area that they will be relying on tax dollars that will then not be available for fighting the fires and for saving lives. The process of constructing this, of dredging, of having the roads, of having the parking spaces, not only could start new fires through the sparks of the trucks, the diesel gas, but the projects also would cause the local plants to be dying and there'd be more of a fire hazard and quickly catch on fire. Not even counting methane itself as highly flammable and explosive and all the toxins that are in the fracking gas, that we don't even have, we haven't even invented a way of purifying and cleaning them out. The harm to our economy would mean that all these people that have moved there hoping to have jobs would be fooled as the last over half a century. Every major fossil fuel project that promises jobs does not provide jobs to the local folks. They bring their own, hire guns that they know they have to blackmail that will not tattle on the poisons. Tim worked on a railroad where they were lying and hiding and causing all sorts of hazards endangering the lives of workers who are silenced and not to be able to tell it. This happens with every fossil fuel project. All those people then who came to the area to get jobs won't have jobs, and all the people that have lost their homes that raised the insurance and lowered the bond ratings of the cities, we wouldn't be able to suck up the water because of turbidity and the harm, then we couldn't put out the fire. And then fires would also burn with more of the toxicity and the gases, so that we don't even have a way to put it out.
Thank you, ma'am. Seth, do you want to close out our hearing tonight?
Thank you for your time, and let me speak. Seth Arbogast, A-R-B-O-G-A-S-T. I have two kids at home. I have a five-year-old and a two-year-old, and I think in between trying to decide on what I was going to say up here tonight, I've been thinking about what I'm going to tell or might have to tell my kids in years when they're dealing with the negative environmental impacts would be caused from this. For them to not have clean drinking water, to me, it just seems like such a basic thing that we should be focusing on to ensure, so that way our children, their children, have the basic need met. And we need to be focusing on sustainable infrastructure and energy and not polluting the environment, because those environmental harms are going to come back on us. We drink the water, we grow food from the soil, and we need to protect the environment and protect ourselves and our children as well. And I'm hoping that we will oppose the and deny the permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Seth. Mark, could you bring Bob in here so I can get him to answer a couple of questions? And that brings us to the close of the hearing, and I've got a couple of things to go over with you. Oh, it's hard to get up when you've been sitting a while, but what I want you to do right now is you were such a fantastic audience, other than a few cell phones going off, you were great, you were so respectful. So please, give yourself a round of applause for all the speakers who spoke tonight. I'm having Bob Lobdell come in here. Bob is one of our technical folks on staff who has this application in front of him, and I want him to tell you about what's next, because we always get that question.
Thank you. So the comment period is going to be closing on the 3rd of February. It's going to take me a couple, three weeks to be able to get through the volume of comments. As of this morning, I think I had about 7,000 on the computer and a couple thousand written comments to go through, plus tonight's. So it's going to take a bit of time, but basically the intent of what we're doing is we're going to be going through every single comment that was received, good, bad, or indifferent, and identifying issues that are substantive to the removal fill law, direct impacts to wetlands and waters of the state. From there, we're going to put together basically what we call an issues letter going to the company, and that's going to be asking that they either address, provide more information or whatever is needed to answer, you know, basically the public comments that come in. From there, we expect the company is going to request an extension of time because we're going to be really short on the 90-day timeframe. Currently, that ends on the 5th of March, so we expect an extension to allow them time to address public comments. From there, depending on what comes up, I don't know how long it's going to take, but there will be back and forth addressing those issues. And eventually, within the timelines where the extension's provided, we will be making a decision.
Thank you, Bob. Don't go away, just in case someone has a further question. So as Bob mentioned, the comment deadline is February 3, 5:00 p.m. So if you're having trouble with your computer, you forgot to get it in the mail, and you sent something to us at 5:01, we can't accept it. We have to hold hard and fast. So please get your comments in. It's easy to do if you have a computer and you want to do it on the web, or handwrite us a letter and send it in. Postal mail still works. It's a lot more than five cents a stamp these days, but it still works. Also, I think that I wanted to tell you once again how important your comments were tonight. I'm so glad many of you are going to submit additional detailed comments, for instance, on the crab study, that was important, all of the things you've talked about. So I really, from my perspective, want to thank you for taking the time to drive here, to sit here, and to participate. And some of you followed us to all these hearings, so hooray for you for sticking in there. And I'll take a few questions, and then we'll close out the hearing. Yes, sir?
Yeah, me and this gentleman here are capable of jamming almost about to get started. So maybe someday you want to have more world testimony, maybe that's over, but since I have the mic right now, please, make this pipeline. You are in a catastrophic situation, quoting Shakespeare's "World Theater is a Fire."
Okay, thank you, sir. I think we all heard that. Are there any questions rather than statements? Yes, ma'am?
Sir, this is the third time that Pabina has requested for this pipeline. Is there a limit to how many times you can ask?
There is no limit to how many times a thing can ask. The first two go-arounds, those applications were withdrawn. We've never made a decision on it, so this is the third go-around, and due process we cannot prevent.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, you know, with the government shutdown, we hear that our firefighters this year aren't being hired and trained currently, and we're not even really having a winter. A friend just posted pictures of the Cow Creek River that's extremely low, that's southern Oregon where I'm from. Two of my nephew and my sister and my mother live on tributaries of the rivers that will be affected. So I'm just wondering what kinds of plan we have in Oregon for this mega-fire season we're facing with extreme temperatures and extremely low rainfall? And also, are the workers planning on building a pipeline through wildfire smoke and wildfire?
Okay, you got to your question at the very end. The question that we can answer, let me try to summarize, because it was a very long question. She's concerned about the wildfire season, the fact the government is shut down and is not training our firefighters. I actually heard that on NPR this morning. And will the workers build the pipeline during a wildfire? First of all, I don't know what we're doing about the wildfire season, that's not our agency. Secondly, the project has not even been approved. It has multiple, multiple agencies that it has to go through to get approval, so I can't answer that question for you right now. can't answer that question for you right now. It won't be, they won't be building it this year, as far as I know, even if we approve it, because there are other agencies that have to approve. And in fact, FERC, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, has a deadline of...
November, I think it's 27th or 29th this year.
Before they make a decision. So, if FERC doesn't decide to go forward, the project goes nowhere. And some people have asked us, why are you making a decision on your removal fill permit before FERC is making its decision? Well, there's a good answer to that, and the good answer is that we have regulatory timelines built into our rules and statutes, and we are required to respond to an applicant within so many days. So, that's why we are moving ahead with what we believe was a complete application. I'll take a couple more questions, and then we need to go in the very back.
Yeah, so this was, the proposal was that FERC denied the proposal in 2016, that's correct, yeah?
FERC denied the proposal in 2016, yes.
Are there any, like, changes, like, major changes to FERC that have happened since then that might change the outcome of the proposal this time?
Are there changes to FERC that might change the outcome of the proposal? I can't answer that. I don't serve on FERC.
I don't know.
And we don't know. The personnel on FERC has changed, but that's all I know. Sir, right there with your hands.
Yes. Are you going to consider just the immediate impacts on Oregon State lands of this project, or are you going to also consider the impact that this project is going to have for centuries?
Are we going to consider immediate impacts or century impacts? Mr. Lobdell, what are our requirements?
I'm going to make you answer that one.
Yeah, make me answer that one. I don't have a good answer for that question, but besides dealing with the immediate issues, I don't know how we'd be looking out to 100 years from now, so I don't know how to answer your questions.
I'll tell you, that'll be in internal conversation, and when we apply all of our rules and regs to this application, we will examine all of the issues that have been brought forward to us, and whether we have the capacity or the requirement to answer all of those things. So, we will be doing our best, and I'll take one more question, sir.
This is a mundane question. For those of us who signed up to testify but didn't fit in the time scale, can we drop off our written testimony and leave it with you tonight?
Absolutely. Can you leave your testimony with us tonight? Yes, and you can leave it with us if you want to mail it in or fax it in, or however you want to get it to us. You have until February 3rd, so please do so. All right, I'm going to have to close the hearing, because we have a lot of personnel here who need to get home, and you all need to drive safely. Thank you very much for coming. It is very appreciated. To us, and whether we have the capacity or the requirement to answer all of those things. So, we will be doing our best, and I'll take one more question, sir.
This is a mundane question. For those of us who signed up to testify but didn't fit in the time scale, can we drop off our written testimony and leave it with you tonight?
Absolutely. Can you leave your testimony with us tonight? Yes, and you can leave it with us if you want to mail it in or fax it in, or however you want to get it to us. You have until February 3rd, so please do so. All right, I'm going to have to close the hearing, because we have a lot of personnel here who need to get home, and you all need to drive safely. Thank you very much for coming. It is very appreciated.